All right, we call the meeting to order. We do a roll call. Chris Beecher, present. Gareth Watchman-Moore.
Present.
Carrie Bagay.
Present.
Frankie Lee.
Here.
Okay, we got four members accounted for for the commission. We have a quorum. Dwayne, would you like to ask somebody to do the implications, please?
Oh, there is. Can you help out?
Okay, it's all by our heads. Our Father, who art in heaven, Lord, we thank you that you have given us such another wonderful day, Lord, and such a great gift is to see your eyes come up and reveal your creation to us. You can see all the world is greeting you. We thank you so much for that pleasure that you have given us. We thank you, why didn't you take care of our relatives that are out there? And that you also provide for community through the efforts of NHA. We thank you so much that you guide us. You guide our minds and our hearts so that we can speak with wisdom, with education. We ask that you continue to bless our leaders up top, who are making decisions on our behalf, and leading our country, leading our communities, and leading our nation in a way that is according to your will. We thank you for the veterans that are out there sacrificing their lives. And we ask that you continue to support their families so that they can find comfort and have hope that their loved ones will come home safely. We thank you so much for all you do, and we ask that you continue to guide us as we go about our mission and our vision for the Navajo Housing Authority. Of that, we thank you for your mercy and grace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Do we have any announcements?
I know, sir.
Okay, see none. We move on to recognizing guests and visiting officials. I don't see anybody, but welcome Louis Sachoa. I think that was his person. Appreciate your presence. I can get a motion to review the agenda.
Motion.
Can you give a second?
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Bagay, to review the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Ayes have it. Anybody like to offer any amendments to the actual agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
We have the need to move in the resolutions portion number two and move that particular resolution to, we need to move it to section after the executive section.
Okay. There's a motion to move item number two on the resolutions with under section six, moving it to after section seven. All in favor, say aye. Okay, your second, sorry.
Second.
Okay, it's motion by Madam Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Lee, to move item number two on the agenda for section six, to move it after seven. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. If I could get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chair, motion.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Bagay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Both say nay. Ayes have it. If I could get a motion to review and adopt the minutes, they've been previously distributed.
Motion.
Okay. Can you give a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Madam Vice Chair, to review and adopt the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say nay. Ayes have it. If you have it, so ordered. On to NHA reports. If I could get a motion to review the reports.
Motion.
Okay, can you give a second?
Second.
It is motion by Madam Vice Chair and seconded by Commissioner Lee to review NHA reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say nay. Ayes have it. We'll move forward and on to the executive report. We'll turn that over to Mr. Waseta.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and Commissioners and guests and staff. Before you have this month's report for a month of July, within the Indian Housing Plan for 2018 and 2020, I'll cover on the LOX balance, where expenditures as of August 14th, we had a total of expenditures of $16.9 million as of year-to-date, and our LOX balance is at $227.4 million. It's coming down. We had some other payments that are still in the process, which we will increase before end of the month of August, so we're moving that along. The other portions of Indian Housing Plan that we presented on July 31st, NHA, Senior Manager, myself, and Chairman Beecher, presented to RDC on information regarding the LOX draw, project activities, ABA, climate information, future activities across Navajo Nation. And the report was accepted by the board, by the committee members. And as of this coming month will be 28th, I believe, this month we'll be presenting monthly updates to them again. So it was good for them to understand where we're sitting at and the success that we're having each month, so we're presenting that as transparency for them, so they'll get a monthly report update. Part of the Indian Housing Plan, we had a visit last week from HUD, and that was just a yearly monitoring. So they came in and looked over our financial management, our organization's structural and procurement contracts with some sub recipients. So they're gonna, they have fourteen members that were participating. Unfortunately, they didn't get done with some of their information, so they're gonna be coming back in September to finish up on some other areas within the Indian Housing Plan from previous year. So at the time in September, they're gonna do the, on the 13th, they're gonna do the closing exit report. So they're gonna be back in two and a half weeks. One thing I want to highlight on this visit, we had a remote monitoring that was requested for procurement contracts. And we've gotten a notice last week back that there was no concerns, issues with the contractual procurement aspects of it, activities, so they just wrote us notifications that were good, and we're complying to all the policies and procedures required under Navajo. The other part of the IHPs, as of August 8th, we, NHA submitted the 2020 IHP Confederate Grant for $5 million, so we have that submitted in HUD's hands now. HUD has sixty days for review, and once they're within sixty days that they accept, everything's is meeting all the requirements for them, we'll do a summary of final acceptance. And there's three projects in this thing. We have exterior repairs for site improvements for three buildings, new construction of six units, and we have some exterior repairs, all part of this $5 million grant. $5 million grant specifically award will be given only to each tribe. That's the limit, max limit, that they'll be giving out. But we understand that they're gonna be offering another one down the road soon, so that's something that we're gonna be preparing for. Part of the, the other part of the IHP, we've completed the VASH renewal application before the deadline of the 23rd, and that was submitted. And these are for additional monies that their federal government's gonna be offering for the Veterans Assistance Program. So the paperwork has been put together and submitted to HUD, so that's all, that's all been completed. Other part of this Indian Housing Plan is the Crown Point Youth. We have a document that's coming for us on to, for a change order for wellers, architects, for additional architectural service. So that's gonna be presented to the Boardship for Authorization. This will allow us to proceed with the project with some additional funding, dis fund amounts for adding to the contract. That's gonna, that's gonna help us in expediting the procurement process to get it going. The other part of the Indian Housing Plan is the Chinley Nursing Home. We still need to work out issues regarding the rental fees with Chinley Nursing Home. This is my understanding that the nursing home has ceased the project because they're running short on monies during the architect, the project management extension, so I need to reach out to Mr. McCall and see what the area of issues are regarding the project management on that area. They're requesting $51,000 from NHA. Unfortunately, the monies that we've already awarded have been obligated, so there's no way that we can increase to $51,000. So looking at, is there ways that we can assist them in trying to get this project finished, using what management we have here? So that's gonna outreach just to finish the project out. So that can, is an update of Indian Housing Plan projects and activities. In progress, we have several policy revisions that's been put in motion. The procurement policy, we're still finalizing some areas there, adding some more language to it from afar regarding the separations of employees from the organization, finalizing that. The procurement P卡 policy's been completed. MPI, MPI policy's ready for approval today. The travel policy, payroll policy's still under review with Mr. Joe. The whistle policy, we're finalizing, added some comments to that, which probably next month we'll have a summary. We're taking our time on there, just some concerns that we gotta cross-reference between the policy and HR policy, so we make sure that we have everything in order before we move forward. The BOCY laws revisions have been completed, so those ones are update for those seven areas of policy changes. The professional recruiting consultant for ARPA 464, we had ending date of August 12th. They're going through the due diligence now and going through the review. This procurement, professional procurement activity here is for the start of the process for retaining of a new executive officer, so that's going through the motions. The other portion was the 2020 census. They were all on the conference call, and it's been echoed across how NHA has stepped up to help. And it was good from what some of the accountants from Albuquerque meetings that they're, that NHA's helping that in that way. So I think that's one thing that's, as we move forward, opening those doors to assist the nation as we have as whole. So we're, there's a Brian, or Tinko is a person that's taken the initiative to work with us. We provided them some GIS data from what we have for some of the houses that we recorded, so they're gonna look at that information and see if they can start putting it in their system. So when they hire people, they have locations that they need to include. The other part of this is the, moving forward is, we're doing a development of a project nomination for submission in the 2020 Construction of Indian Country. We're gonna use the design concept from the Kianta project for demo rebuild, using those designs and put them in a packet to submit for NHA. So that's gonna, that deadline's coming up soon, so we're working with Leon Shirley and Sowers to put everything together on this packet for nomination. Hoga Hojo, we're working on, I had, finally got through, we got through with the other portion with the building. Just now I'm working with a gentleman named Michael Smith. He's a legal counsel with Pavilion Construction. So Pavilion Construction is one firm that built the building, so they wanna do a walkthrough with us before the final, they start doing the repairs to those buildings. So their legal counsel is working on, we're looking at August 30th sometime in the morning to do a walkthrough with them. Then once we get the corrective action plan with the contractor, then we can initiate the actual, start doing the transfer from Navajo Nation to NHA. So that's gonna, we'll be in motion. It's taking some time, just because of the legal certification that's part of that. The other part of the, that's in progress is the Navajo Nation, we've met, sat down with presidents and office and some of the programs. We're trying to pull all together the CSN-funded infrastructure projects across Navajo Nation. Apparently it's over $200 million. So I met with the Utility Authority on their, Mr. Koontz mentioned it, informing that they're about a year and a half behind rolling this out. They're having struggles how to utilize, pull the money out of the CSN. They're utilizing, my understanding, the interest variance off of the monies that invested. So they're having a little bit of struggle setting up the process of how they're gonna draw those monies out to start. So NHA's used some of their own money to initiate the project, but some of these are big projects that are kneeling construction money. So I'm gonna reach out to all the programs, or some of them are chapters, some of them are, some of the rural development programs, to see what, where they're at. So, because I wanted, NHA is looking at marrying up some of those projects, activities that we have with some of them, so we don't have to pay for some of the infrastructures. And we're gonna prioritize some of our clients that are associated to some of those communities and see if we can put them up, prioritize their developments. The other meeting that's in progress is Navajo Veterans Office. Mr. Zane, James Zirmer, he's a new acting director, and working with them, he's been talking in the last several weeks of how NHA had agreement with them and some of their processes. He's identified process under application, enrollments and procedures, so he was looking at coming to NHA and utilizing our process and seeing how they can streamline their areas of improvement. Because they're having a little bit of struggles on how they prioritize clientele at different levels. So Mr. Tulley is part of this whole, I have him doing the lead, trying to get everything organized between Veterans Office, because they're gonna do some changes there at that level. So we're working with them on there. Meeting-wise, like I explained earlier, we did the July 30th meeting with, or 31st meeting with RDC. On the 30th, same date, on July 30th, we met with Councilman Mark Freeland regarding the Chinley, or not Chinley, the Crown Point Youth Center. So Mr. Freeland is the one that did the resolution, completed a resolution for the remaining money for Crown Point. So he's been wanting updates on it, so we've had a meeting with him, and we brought in the controller, so there's, and even on that portion, they're having some struggles of how a process they're gonna be taking that money out of, out of the CSN to fund these projects. So we're working through that, that activity. This one will affect the same project to NTC, NTCU, Navajo Technical University, because they were awarded $14 million. So those are some of the things that, with us here, is working with the controller's office to figure out how we're gonna pull those monies down. As we mentioned last month, and in each month, we're now having our HUD conference call. These are just, the conference calls is program support and money progress is to HUD. So the next one that's scheduled is on August 28th at 11:00 a.m. And these ones are just basically kinda giving each other's heads up. If we have questions regarding some Indian Housing issues, that we can just get information straight from them. And I'll provide the call-in numbers if you guys wanna participate in those discussions with those updates on every, it's gonna be on the last Wednesday of each month. Also, part of this too, the meetings that was held, grants management and staff and Ms. Long, they met with District 14, provided them some of the information on a guidance recommendation on establishing your housing association. This is an organization that's still trying to ground, build a foundation, so I have a meeting next scheduled for August 30th to sit down with Mr. Chester Carl. He's the advisor for this program, so I'm gonna, I'll meet with him and see what his concerns are, or how, how he's building this program up. So that's, that's at the executive level now to see, giving them guidance. One of the big meetings that we had was on August 8th. NHA participated with our partner, SWIFT. We had the senior military officers from Washington DC come to a meeting in Albuquerque by in Gallup from Department of Defense. The meeting was basically, they wanted to see the success of what their CBs were doing, all the military branches in the last 20 years with SWIFT working with them. So we gave a presentation of the history that we had with Housing Authority and SWIFT, and they were very impressed in magnitude of services that the government has given, our military training. And what was good about this is that the crew that was, the recent crew that was building the homes were two young, one, or two young Navajo individuals. And they were actually got to see what the houses, they're building a house, they're worth something place, and then talk to the community. So this was a really good event. It put a lot of light on what we're doing. We had Jackie McKinney there from Kinley County, talked highly about Navajo Housing Authority and the passion that of us providing homes to Navajo people. The last part of the meetings that I met with was the President's Office, with Ernest taking the lead on a meeting with the Navajo Home Relocation, Scatterside Projects, and the planning of future projects. So those are kind of the meetings that I've attended and some of the updates for some of the credit volumes. I didn't put all, I didn't put all the other meetings that were just the main accomplishments. That was in my report, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Dwayne, for the report. I have a question regarding Hoga Hojo. What about the property management aspects? What's happening with that?
The property manager is still overseen by J.L. Gray, and J.L. Gray is using the rentals to cover their fees. So once I can get done with this portion, we're gonna meet with J.L. Gray out of Farmington, their main office, and then with our housing management. My recommendation is probably going to contract with them for now, because there's certain taxes and stuff we have to pay in Gallup. So gives us some time to start learning those processes, what we're gonna do, if we're gonna fully take it over.
So at this point, there's no formal agreement with that?
No, there's no formal agreement.
Not yet, okay.
It's still sitting there with the Navajo Nation, because Navajo Nation, so until we, until Navajo Nation does their quiet title, transfers over everything, then we get involved. So it's still sitting at Navajo Nation's court, because the Navajo Nation purchased the building.
So is the Navajo Nation working with J.L. Gray? Or are they living in?
Yeah, well, the Land Department is the one that's key, so that's kinda how we're working with them now.
Okay. Mr. Chair, other questions regarding veterans? What is the status of our veterans program? And, you know, some of the political concerns about NHA withdrawing its support of veterans? I don't think that's the case, right?
No. What, the confusion that I'm seeing is that the wording, Navajo Nation has a Veterans Assistance Program, NHA has a, but two different things. So we may have to rename our program. And that's kind of giving the, when you look at the applications from the Navajo Nation Veteran Office versus ours, ours is a true assistance. The Navajo Nation is actually the program that's just everything, they're building up a house and everything. So we're looking at the changes on that area.
So another question, are we still, I know that there's a resolution that we have in place that supports the Navajo Nation's position on veterans and $2 million every year. Are we still meeting the spirit of the tribes of support of veterans? I think this was done a few years ago.
Yeah, there's, we're not meeting the full extent of that, seeing that how much we've actually give for subsidies, so we're working on that area there, which veterans, there's some of the veterans that got, say, that purchased a new house, they got their $10,000. Some of them that have rentals, they've actually paid some of their rental fees, but we're still going through those motions of going over to them.
So if I could ask a question based on that comment, really what we should probably look at it as is the fact we can help more veterans. We still have funds available to help them.
Yes, sir. And that's laying out the criteria is what I'm seeing is that what levels of, how many clients? So we have a new, we have six veterans going through the homeownership program now, that's going under award today. So $10,000 will be helping for assistance down payment, but there's another listing of new homeowners that we're going to be dealing with the Scatterside, so that's gonna be what we're gonna need to lay out, the matrix of where the money's gonna go to, how we're, and I think one of the things with the VASH kind of offset that, because our VASH money's helping rental assistance too. So I think the whole program needs to kind of re, the matrix has to be changed a little more of what we're gonna be helping them, because if, say, like Navajo Nation's program there, maybe we can fund some of that money to help with on their program. But it's sitting at, the whole matrix back up again.
Let me just add to that. As far as the veterans program, we are assisting. We assisted 128 public rental clients, a total of $32,851.50. And then we also assisted 35 actual veterans client, and we assisted $303,002.17. So that's all based on the policy that was implemented by NHA as far as the $3 million is concerned. So they all have to qualify based on the criteria, so we are continuing to assist the veterans. So what happens is with the $10,000, they may get up to $10,000 in assistance, depending on where they're at currently on their ledger. And they also, with the veteran, public rental veterans as well, up to $50.
So we have more support to provide, you're saying?
Yes.
And that maybe funding, funds to the veterans program might be?
Might be an option, might be an option.
I would support that, Mr. Chair.
And this is where, this is where it would help us in terms of if we do some, like at, reestablish MOA with them, but at certain areas of oversight, so.
It seems to me, and I guess I'll put sort of financial, what I wanna make sure is that we're encompassing all of the money that we're using toward that goal of $2 million, so we have a better idea. We just talked about SWIFT, and we know that some of those homes go to veterans. I wanna make sure that we kind of have a collective picture of what NHA is doing for all veterans. Doesn't just have to be specifically in this area that we're talking about with the homeowners and, and public rental. But if we do end up doing that, we need an entire picture of exactly how we're helping veterans at all capacities. And the reason I say that is because people wanna know, and we need to be able to provide them, this is all the ways that we're helping, because it comes up and it's a question that continually gets asked. And it doesn't help that we have two very similar named or identically named programs that operate in two different realms. We just need to make sure we can distinguish all the ways that we're helping veterans. And I think, in my mind, the SWIFT assistance qualifies because we are definitely helping veterans in that respect. And if we end up doing some sort of MOU or MOA with the Veterans Office through the President's Office, and we're able to provide support then, whether it's technical or whatever, we also need to say, hey, we're providing that technical support to get another veterans organization off the ground. And the hours that we spend doing that need to be accounted as such, as well as any type of financial help that we're able to provide. So that, all that needs to be kind of rounded up under that more, I guess, more broad heading of how we're helping veterans. I'd like to have that, be able to report that to oversight committees and President's Offices and Council.
I think the, what you just explained is kind of the thought pattern that we're looking at. Because if we can't, we can, if we can't hunt our help fully financially, I think one of the biggest struggles that veterans have is the pre-planning aspects of their high technical, just to get me there. Because there was a discussion we had with the credit services. There's a lot of people come in, they're qualified, they're, they're part of the veterans, but they just don't have the technical, the experience to handle all the homicide, these environmental, all that stuff, to get them a house. And that's what's holding them up, so. But this is something that, that's why I'm open dialogue with James. James is the President's staff that was moved over. He's a veteran, he was a contractor, so he's saying that there's just so much areas that has, has barriers and challenges that he's needing to sit down and bring some of those. And that's why he made the recommendation, can be really possible, ask all of your application process, establish that, because what he's found out at different agencies, he had, each one of them were processing documents different. So we wanted to bring it back together. So that's, that's gonna oversee.
Right, right. Well, and that's my understanding from one of the council delegates, even back when we started, our particular terms, that was an issue for him of spending the money. And they said, we have all this money, we can't get it out. And that's, it's not an uncommon problem, unfortunately, with some of our other entities, that they've got some money, it's hard to get it out there and get it spent correctly. So. So, but yeah, I would just recommend that. I do support giving them some sort of expertise that we have and doing our very best to support their cause as well. Any further questions?
One more question. Regarding to SWIFT, I want to thank everyone here and yourself, Duane, for highlighting the work that you've done over time with SWIFT. And I've been to the facility in Gallup and I know that there was at one time discussion about replicating what they have there in Gallup and bringing it here to Navajo because they need a bigger building, for one thing. Is that something that's still in discussion or is it that they're already tapped out and, you know, they can't grow the work that they do with us?
That's one of the discussions that we want to present to you regarding equity reserve.
Okay.
So it's a discussion, Mr. Lopel provided that presentation.
Great.
But that's something that we looked at because Jack McKinney over there during the presentation says, you know Navajo Nation is just a half a mile from here. Why can't you guys find your land over there to build something that doesn't have to pay property tax? So he put that out. So it's something that we need to really look at with Navajo Land Department. Because just south of the airport is Navajo Nation land. It's in Red Rock town. So if you go to the shortcut from Alice Tanner behind the airport, there's, there's no developments there because that's Navajo Nation.
It's Navajo Nation.
So those are, so that's something that we need to, so, but we'll discuss that more when he's, makes his presentation.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Wissato, appreciate the report. We'll move on to the ops report with Mr. Franklin.
My report is under tab three. And the first table there that's on my report has to do with the Navajo labor for this coming fiscal, put it in, the engine fiscal year 2019. We have PMEX construction, Oviso construction, Sowers. We have three Sowers contracts, or four actually. We have Lamb Rockford. And then we also have subcontractors and maintenance temporarily hired. You see the numbers there. This, this time around, we decided to count how many women Navajo laborers are out there providing services to our clients. So we have that. And then we're going to be adding veterans to this list in the next report. We couldn't verify a lot of the veteran status as far as hiring process. So we, we did inform the contractors that we do want to know how many veterans they are hiring, Navajo veterans. So you'll see there for PMEX, there's six, six labors there. Oviso Construction, which is the Tuba City streets, four. We're coming to close on that one here pretty soon. Sowers Construction, Fort Defiance Modernization, we have 46 there and three women. That's in addition to the 46, that's not including the 46. And then we have Ch'au Ch'ibito, we have one, we have one woman out there that's being hired. And then we have 28 employees, Navajo employees there. Gutiay, 27, one. And then Lamb Rockford, 31 and two. And then Sowers Construction or Torion Exterior Rehab, 25 and one there. Subcontractors that are underneath, the contractors there, there's 47. And then four. Then Arnie has his group, they have 107. So we have a total of, for the month of July, 321 employees. And then also 12 women that were hired to do all the construction that's on there. So that's my first table there. And we'll continue to compile information on that, on that information. So then, turn to the next page, I have another table there. It's, displays the procurement activity for IHP. We have under activity one, we are, AZ 1203 has been re-put back out for hesitation. Am I true? I saw, I signed the.
Great. Can remember which one it was.
Yeah, that's on, that's over in Ch'ibito. And then 1505, 20 units, that's on the rebid. 1503, 30 units, that's over, it's a rebid. Mexico 40 has been completed, 40 units, there's three sites there. We have 1580, there's 20 units that have been under rebid. And then Arizona 40 units, two sites is in the rebid. And then we have 1513, 60 units over in Navajo that has completed and going into reconstruction phases. So that's our procurement for activity one, which is operation maintenance of 1937 units. And then the next, the next one there is for 1234, IHP activities, Tuba City Office Building. We had our bid opening and I think it's on the agenda for approval. Yes, it is, it's on the agenda for approval. So then the same thing with Winter Rock, 1257, this is the final phase of that project. It's right behind the central office there. There's 51 units that will be there. And then we also have scattered sites, have 16 units of those 16. I was informed that there's five veterans that we're helping in that, in that Scatterside project. And that, of course, is on, throughout the whole Navajo Nation. And then we have 1544, which is Little Water. That is, is under re-advertising. We should be bringing that to legal here and hopefully we can get it on the, on the agenda for the next POC meeting. So those are the ones that are, are in the procurement phase. We do have several other projects that are in the final phase of the RFP, which is the Bakochikai, Rock Springs, Winter Rock, and Hawk, which is AKA Blue Stone. So those projects are reaching the final stages. From the last emails I've, I've read, they are now in the, they're all set up for interviews. So we'll get through the interviews, we'll select a, a, a firm that's going to be a design-built firm that's going to take over the project. Or we'll have release of funds for all planning activities. We have, and the budgets are being set up. So by the time we select a, an entity, we will go right into design. Okay. Next one there, we have Development and Construction Services Division. And of course, there's a three modular units, modular unit project there, I mean not modular, modernization projects. We have 10 units over in Ch'au Ch'ibito, they're at 54%. 37 units over in Fort Defiance, which is right down the road here. That's at 52%. 19 units over in, in Gutiay, and it's 12, 149. There's supposed to be 15, and then 15. And that's at 21%. As far as new development construction, there's 36 units that are still under construction over at Kaibato, and it reached 70%. And we have the Tuba City Construction Road Project, which is at 88%. And then we have the three SWIFT units that are placed over, there's one over in, it's a place called Upper Fruitland, and two over in Bennett Free's area. Those are all at 92%. We're just waiting for the final electrical utility hookups and then we'll, we'll have those ones, would be in the moving process. So the streetlights for the 315 units, Navajo Nation wide, I didn't put a percentage there, but we are at 80% complete on that project. And we should, the last 20% should go pretty quick because they're pretty much set all the concrete foundations, all they've got to do is set holes and get them going. Okay, the next table I have there is the collect, tax collected for this month in total for active projects right now. For Torion, there was, it was, it was, taxes were collected in the amount of $22,990.35. Total collects is collected so far for that project is 400, or 26,422.64. For streetlight projects for this month, we are for the month of July, we have 11,426 that's been collected. Total collection on that is 186, 874. And then we have, and then for the next batch of projects there, those are all modular projects. We have a total of 489,266.84. That's how much taxes have been collected on those projects. And then you have three SWIFT projects there. And for the month of July, we have 3,102.96 that's been collected for the month of July. And then for the whole, for the whole, for the duration of the project, we have 23,751. And then the next ones are the Oviso projects. We've collected a total of 515,0947. And then the next batch are the, the, the modernization projects. So total collects is, taxes collected on those projects for the month of July is 84,581. So if you add that up with the top table there, we've collected 108,101 dollars worth of taxes for the month of July. And then for the total taxes collected for the active projects there is 2,845,1683. So that's how much tax we've collected or has been paid out from NHA.
For year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date?
For, yeah, for, just for these active projects there.
Okay.
But I, I can get you the year-to-date. I was, I forgot to put that in here. I was going to put it in here.
So it's probably higher.
It's going to be much higher, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going to be way much higher.
I think that'd be good information, especially being able to go back to leadership and show them how the benefit is, you know, how much benefit there is to Navajo.
So the next table, so that, that's pretty much the Construction Services Division. Any questions on that before I move on to the next division?
Going back to the procurement activity for the IHP project for 2019, can you tell me the closing date of the re-advertising and rebid? Because those ones are still the same as last month. So if you could let me know when have been closed or are closed? So you could start the opening bid process on those.
Okay. Can I provide that later on? I can provide that later on, I just got to look up the dates on it. And I, I can probably, I'll include that the next time in my next, in my next report, the opening, the opening dates, please. Once they have a number, their, the timetables are set. So the ones that don't have a number are the ones that are still going through the approval process.
And then, my next question, the tax that you went over, those are Navajo Nation tax?
Navajo Nation tax.
If we can state that one there.
Okay.
Question, what's the next report you're going to go over?
Maintenance.
I've got a question on the construction side.
Okay.
How many ongoing projects do we have right now for full construction?
For full construction, we have, there's three on modernization. And then we have one, two, two projects in new development. And then one in infrastructure and one in crime prevention.
How many of those are going, have already gone through change orders?
For these projects, not, not that any of them's gone through change order.
That's good. Yet.
With Oviso?
Oh, yeah, that's the, that's the only one we have of change. That's where they.
And that was the rest two months.
Yeah.
And that was.
That was when BIA added more, restricted, or added more, added to the scope of work.
Which project was that?
This is the Tuba City Road.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. But, but no other project?
No, no, there's nothing.
Okay.
So kind of follow-up on the, on the BIA and Tuba City, that Tuba City Road. I heard it mentioned and I can't remember where we were at, but somehow the BIA was inspired to finish out the rest of the roads.
Yes.
Okay, what kind of commitments do we have? Is it writing, is it just a verbal commitment? Time frame?
The.
Feet, the number of feet where they're looking at doing?
Yeah, well, according to Aldusso, which is the one, is the person who made that statement.
Okay.
They don't have a timetable, but they are, they are, like you said, they're inspired to finish up the rest of the road because that road is pretty much in their hands. They don't have site control in that, on that road. So they're, it's going to be the rest of the road all the way to the top of the route there. And that'll be, and that'll be under BIA's jurisdiction because everybody's praising what we're doing out there and it looks, it looks way better than it was before. And we can probably provide some pictures later on.
Can you get a follow-up from BIA and just see what kind of overview? Because I mean, it's, it's important to be able to give that type of information. It's also, you know, people, people and management change would rather have something in the states and overall plan, not even just for this particular project, but anytime they make a statement like that, we need to document it. And so that'd be, I think, helpful in the long run, not only for this, but any, any type of like commitments. If we're able to inspire somebody to step up and get things done, let's try to map it out.
I've got a question here. The, I'm looking at that, at the Tuba City Street Rehab Project. Now, we've had change orders on it. Now, it doesn't show on here to me the, the, the effect of the change order on the timeframe for project completion. I don't have, I don't see an original estimated date of completion. Just trying to figure out how long the delay, what the delay length time-wise has cost us with the BIA.
They are, they have been, they committed to us to be, the closing day should be on here.
Mr. Lee, your question of the change order, correct? The change order didn't impact the time in the contract period. It was actually, the change order was the initial start of it, but we didn't put in motion to execute the notice of proceed.
Oh, okay.
So the, so the change order was basically the design part. We didn't issue the notice of proceeding until we got that accepted. So the value of the change order was prior to the initial notice to start. So we're still on schedule.
I have to comment on that as well. The reason for the change and the reason why we weren't able to obtain the initial review from BIA was because of the government shutdown. For several weeks, the BIA office was closed due to the government shutdown. So they have worked back up. And then by the time we had got their design reviews, we had, we, we were wanting to push the project forward so that I was listening to that change order.
So is it safe to say that? So is it safe to say the government shutdown cost us money that we'll never get back?
It wasn't money, it just delayed the finish date. And I believe it delayed us about six weeks.
I thought you said that the delay, the delay is the reason behind the change order? The shutdown, the government shutdown is the reason behind the change order?
Well, not necessarily. The comments that were provided by the BIA was the reason for the change. What I mean by that is they wanted to include features that were not originally part of the, which we call roadway. They wanted to, they added comments that we might get a street section as opposed to regular roadway. And so their comments, they wanted to include curbing gutter, which was not existing on the previous roadway. So that type of comments is what we did not anticipate, because technically it is a roadway. It's not a street section, so we did not initially design it that way. And that was the reason for the change.
Was your request after the design had been finished?
Yes, and we had submitted for their comments during the design period, but that the comment period fell right at the time of the shutdown. So that was the reason for the delay, the delay comments.
In my opinion, I would, I would put the blame on the government shutdown then. And it did cost us a hundred thousand dollars to conduct that change order, pretty much seventy-four thousand, but, yeah.
Should we send BIA a bill? All right, thank you, appreciate that.
That's all I had.
All right, Mr. Frank, go ahead.
Okay, so go on to maintenance. So the first table I have there is an overall picture of how, what the vacancy turnover per quarter was. You have first quarter, you had twenty-three. Second quarter, there was fifty-three, sixty-one, sixty-nine. Third quarter, we had fifty-one, forty-three, and forty-nine. The last quarter, we had thirty, thirty-five, thirty-five units here. Expenditures have been one point five million, just to get these units back up and ready to move in.
These are the ones that are vacant, and it was down?
Yeah.
Great. And they've been turned back over to housing management to reoccupy.
Do we have an average time, the time that we finish and the time that they're occupied?
No, I don't have that. Housing management would, they receive it and then they...
Yeah.
But it's also tracked in doorways, so.
Okay.
We can write that in the next week or two.
Yeah, we could, but I think it's interesting because another one problem we've had in the past was a house being ready to go and not being occupied fast enough. And I mean, having vandalism or something like that. I just kind of want to get an idea of how fast we're turning these and getting them into the homeowner or the public rental's hands, I guess the public rental's hands. Kind of think on, along that same line, I'd be very interested to know what the oldest unit we have out on there, like that has, that's still vacant from the public rental side. I know we're dealing with different times.
Right, that was something I was working on this month, but it keeps getting pushed because of other higher priority things, but it is a stat that I'm working on.
Okay.
But there are, for the majority of the fifteen HMOs, they're all vacated since just the turn of this year, 2019. So most of their older stock that was 2018 and beyond have been renovated, and some of them are waiting for occupants. But like I said, Shiprock and Tubus City, they have the bigger inventories, and those are the ones that they've had difficulty getting those oldest ones off, I mean, the older ones beyond 2019, so.
Okay.
But they're doing...
I think it's interesting to know, but I think it's also helpful to kind of gauge some of those longest, there was one down here, I think, by the interstate that at one point had been six years unoccupied, six or seven, or something like that. And then we finally got it up and going, but I'd like to know what are our oldest outstanding vacancies?
Right, I think that's an HO you're talking about down in Hawk.
Okay. Either, either way, though, I'd like to know on each. But if you could get that for the next month, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Question, Lee?
What's the status of the cleaning out the cowguards at Yanbatol and repairing the fence, completing the fencing around Yanbatol?
That is underneath Owen Arbisos' cover on ground.
Okay, what about the retaining wall slash drainage wall over in the east housing of
Technically, we can't get a release of funds to do that project until that dispute between the state and BLM is rectified. We've, we've tried several times to get that, that piece of property. See, what happened was, they had set monuments way back, and then for some reason, they came back and they resurveyed that old, that lot line, and now they moved, now there's actually two monuments out there sitting side by side, and which put the property that's owned by Laguna into our property. So we can't, we've been trying to resolve that, but we just can't, we just can't get that, get the property resolved because it's a dispute between the two surveyors that did that, that did the actual survey of that, of that lot.
Is there some higher up you could go to to resolve that?
We went all the way to the, it was the state, to the state level.
You know, I talked with the councilman from out there, and he had met with the governor, and he's, he's got some, got some movement on the waterline issue. And I think you, I think you should consider maybe talking with the councilman to reach out to the governor on that, because with that degradation of the, of that drainage behind the wall, you know, that puts, really puts our housing there in, in a bad situation. You know, potentially, if we get a huge range of rain event, you know, we could really suffer a lot of damage there instead of just letting it continue to wait. I think if we work with the councilman, maybe we could get a political push to get it done.
Mr. Lee, this was part of the discussion on Thursday, overlaps and lease boundaries issues. Mike Halona reported that, that this Tohajuli, the way they change everything back and forth, has affected a lot more than us. All band land has shifted over, so when they change it over so many feet and going up the road on the Naval Nation side has actually decreased a lot of property. So they're working with, they're working with BLM on that. But his statement was that, that the surveyor of record won't go back and go back, so to use historical landmarks to reestablish those monuments. So that was coming, the monumentation that the BIA, the BIA and BLM were doing, notifying Naval Nation. So they're, they're working on that, so, and that's something I told them that it's affecting us there. Because they told us that the way, we have homeownerships, and those are, we're gonna be, you start planning for conveyance, and we gotta get those surveys adjusted, because when these people are paid off, we wanna start conveying those lots. So this, it's gonna be, we can, I think, for ourselves, we can look at some monies and certainly get the hydrologies and some of the stuff in place, and put us the actual physical, if we do it and ask for forgiveness later, we have to do that until they figure that thing out. But it is, it is a, it is a major concern that we have to address quickly.
Would we be breaking the law if we fixed it?
No, if we go back to historical data, the original data that they're saying to use, which was, it's in our property line, yeah, we can.
I think we should repair it because it just endangers all of our property over there.
Yeah.
Leaving it in that state, and I know that the way that, the way that the drains has worked itself out, it goes to one landowner's, one owner's plot, or their lot, and then they've created a ditch to handle all that water to flow through their property, and then, and then dump itself onto the street. And that, that's not, that's not good.
What I found out from Thursday's meeting is Laguna tried to bought that land, so there's some of that, we need to open up some consultation with them, see if they will do us trespassing. We did that with Rema. We asked for permission to trespass, to mediate the water coming onto our property. So that's something that we could probably request that. In the Rema situation, we just got the permit of access to reroute the sheet flow, and from there, basically, took it away from the property, so that's one option that we could look at, because then we can basically...
Well, that location's difficult because you've got the drains coming down at the corner of our, of our housing there, and then you've got a hill on one side, and the flow is supposed to go along the backside of that wall, and it's not doing that.
The, Brian looked at the hydraulics portion, you can come around with a swell on the north side to bring it around there, because we do have elevation to topography to our advantage. So looking at that, I think one of the things is that, I guess from my office, I can fashion up a letter to the local tribe, asking for some consultation to see if they'll allow us to go and maybe build a swell for, to control that water to not directly hit us.
So our, our housing division is now right in the corner, the northwest corner, northeast corner? Okay.
And this is one of the things with some of the older development sites, we didn't use the, we didn't use the hydrology modeling on back then. We basically didn't look on the, the flow of water coming onto the area, so it's just basically bill and suit. But I think as we move forward, we're using a lot of technology aspects of it in identifying what's on outside versus what's on the inside, because outside flows, it's impacted all of our development sites.
Okay. I think that needs to be addressed, and I saw that a year or two ago, you know, we're out there and looked at it. And, you know, on the drainage side too, up in Tubus City, that, that drainage canal, is that totally cleaned out now? Was that maintenance activity?
No, it's not completed. I mean, the drains are cleared, but the right-of-way sides and the fencing where the sand dunes are at, they're not completed yet. We're working on doing a contract with Owens' monies to do that.
How long's that been going on?
We just barely got the monies this year.
Okay, okay.
Get a timeframe?
Is it for the Tubus City?
Can you get it done this year?
For Tubus City, he's looking at the end of August, beginning of September.
We should try to address these drainage issues before winter time comes.
Right.
You know, so we're not keeping our fingers crossed until springtime now for all the runoff, so.
I'll see if I can gather the data that was, because it was an attempt, there was an attempt made to contact Laguna Tribe, but Laguna Tribe, all they told us was move your, move your fences and move those poles out of our, out of our area, is pretty much how they stand right at that time. So they are not budging, at that time, they were not budging, we can make another chance at it, make another attempt to see if we can resolve that issue. That was their, their last stance was, you are, you are trespassing, get your fence out of our area and your poles.
You know, about a year ago, we got that report on housing across all of NXA that showed the duration of units that were unoccupied. You know, I'd like to see that report again, because I have been driving around our, our housing and looking, and there still are units that are boarded up, you know, and I thought we were trying to, trying to eliminate all that. Whether it's a maintenance issue, or, or it's, you know, we have to rebuild it or tear it down, it's still, it's still out there. That's all. Oh, except I saw, saw some of Sheep Springs again, I'm always driving by there.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Frank, go ahead.
Okay, one of the projects that Arnie has done off the ground is Torreon, Torreon, public rental re, exterior repair. You get forty-nine percent now, they're moving pretty quick. They should be done at the end of this year. Of course, there's always the doorways. One of the things that we've been doing, I've had, Arnie's group has pretty much embraced doorways as far as their, their work order module, and they are, are running with that. So our, our biggest, the next component to doorways is the involvement of the housing management staff. So we've been meeting with housing management staff, and we've determined, we went through all their SOPs, and we have found some loopholes that we gotta fix, that we're going to be, we actually did fix it right on the fly, so that we can, and it's all based on the responsibilities of the housing technician, the responsibility of the housing specialists, the responsibility of fiscal technician, and the administrative assistants that are out there. So you have four, four positions out of each of the fifteen, the housing management offices. They all have different functionalities and confunctions on what they are doing out there. So fiscal technicians are basically just there to collect payment, and to make adjustments, and to make, they remain contact with, with finances through the Treasury Department. Then you have the housing technicians, the housing technicians actually do all the intake, they do the applications, make sure everything's, is, is there according to the, according to the list, that's, the requirement list that's, that's in there, and then they do the verifications, make sure that that, that has been all according to policy. And then from there, it gets handed off to the housing specialist, who actually does the, the actual move-in process, and, and then also the recertification, every year, recertification. And that mainly is to look at the household composition, and then we determine if that's changed, and then also to see if there's any changes in the household income based on that. And they go through that, and, so we, we have all those procedures going through, and I'll be taking that information and having my conversation with doorways to see that, make sure that they, that that application will address the standard operating procedures of the NHA at housing management level. So that's, that's, that's what's been happening on that. So we've made great, I think we're gonna, we're resolving the issue as far as the transfer of information, so that's one of the things that I've noticed too, like I said, is that the, like you said, that, you know, there's a lot of vacant houses out there, how fast are we occupying them? I have to put this process in place so that I can start track, so we can start tracking that, that process, and give a, give a good matrix on how fast these things are moving from one season to the next.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, speaking about that, I'm still seeing a disconnect between H and B and maintenance and your brand. And how I see that is through the units still being vacant.
Yeah.
Now, whether they're HOs or PRs, I don't think that's the answer. I think the fact that they're still vacant, and that they've been vacant. But I do know that if you travel, say to Shiprock, you see an HO unit on top of the hill, it's all boarded up with a mattress still outside, covering one of the windows. And then the one in Hawk, you know, being an HO, it's still vacant. So I don't know if you have a global list you're working on of all vacant PRs and vacant Nahaza units, homeowner, homeownership units, but I think that's necessary because it's kind of hard to track on a monthly basis. I'm looking at Arnie's report, and it says vacant Nahaza homeowner units only in Delcon. And yet, in your priorities for the month, it says, continue progress of RSP, RFPs, procure contract for design bills and repairs to twenty-seven, twenty-seven vacant nineteen-thirty-seven HO units and six of ten vacant Nahaza units across the Naval Nation. Surely, are you telling me that there's a total of thirty-seven vacant units across the Naval Nation? Is that your focus?
Not for the HOs, no. That's just for that one contract from the funding source. There's, the Nahaza units that we're talking about, the four, there's four in Arizona, two underneath Delcon, two underneath Chindli. Delcon has, because they finished their public rental units, their inventory of those, and they're done, and either they're being rented out or they've been rented out. The Nahaz, two units there, they've used those temporary crews to go fix those units. And they're actually turned back over to the housing management office, now the last thing I have to do is... Now, the last thing I have to do is dispense the lots. So that's two of the tens that are on that funding source. And then Chin Lee has two. And last week, that maintenance started using their temporaries on that because they've finished their public rental units and have turned those over to the housing management office. The ones in New Mexico are underneath a maintenance shop that still has public rental units it's focusing on. So those are the ones we're doing a contract on to get those taken care of. The twenty-seven are the nineteen thirty-seven act. And those are the ones that have more complex fixes. I mean, they're, some of them, you're gonna have to take all the interior sheet rock off to rewire because they pulled all the vandals and pulled all the wires out. And then, of course, there's gonna be an upgrade to the electrical service for that. And so those are under contracts and we, because we've written our, rewritten our IHP for maintenance four times this year. All the funding is now back to 2019. And now we have an issue with them using Program One funding because they're no longer on FCAST. So now we have to go and find the funding somewhere else to do that. So again, it's, you know, taken back out of the balls and taken out of my court again and put back to these folks here to identify the source so that we can then go and start again, or not start again, but continue the process. The RFP packets are ready to go to procurement, go to Linda at the contracts here exist.
What's the, so what's the total on all RFPs that you've got going after? What's the number of houses that we're looking at fixing? They fall into that category?
Of the HOs, there's, including the twenty-twenty, there's ten in twenty-twenty that are part of the competitive grant. There's fifty-four nineteen thirty-seven act homes. And then there's ten of the Nahaza units. And there's four more that are actually in the twenty-twenty IHP.
So what about the scattered sites that are vacant HOs?
They're not in my project scope.
And where does all that fall? Because I think the one in Shiprock is a scattered site HO.
Right.
Still vacant, pretty obvious.
When we first started this project, we only did the vacant HOs that were within a housing project, a hundred percent underneath control of NHA. We did not do the scattered sites because if we went and renovated them and there was no family member from that area eligible to assume that house, then we would go and give it to somebody else. And then there'd be that argument, well, they don't belong out here, this is not their family area and all that stuff. And then the risk of it going up and smoke before we finish it increases.
Well, I hope we don't do that. So I, Mr. Chair, I still see a disconnect here because we have units vacant still. Prioritizing those within a subdivision makes sense, but they're still vacant. But then again, you said that some of those units came off FCAST. You know, maybe you can explain.
Well, before you do that, I think, we've got these units here and they fall under FCAST, okay? And so they've gone off the rolls of FCAST. Where do they sit technically? You know, I understand that they're gone from the FCAST count. Where do they sit? Can we get higher-income people into them? Can we rent them out? Can we buy them specifically with non-programme income and then turn them into rentals for higher wages folk and their families? Because I know that there's gonna be people out there that want to rent. And this is one of the things we've mentioned as a board several times in the last couple of years. But if we've got houses just sitting there and we can get them going, they could either do like, you know, like I said, a rental type thing for higher-income folks and we buy them off our rolls, basically, and have them as our own inventory stock. And what happens there is we can actually start generating money off of the stuff we're fixing up.
Right.
And we can take that money and turn it into other stuff for either middle income or higher income. If they're just sitting there and there's no incentive to get them filled, then they're not doing anybody any good. And I think that's, that's probably the next, you know, phase we need to shift into because it's great that the public rentals are going well, but if they're off FCAST and why do we have to put them back into Nahaz to stock or, you know, or anything else? Why not just buy the units or fix the units up with NPI and turn them into something that generates money for everybody else?
If I may, Commissioner, that's a conversation I've been having with my supervisor for months now.
Yeah.
So it's not something new that we haven't thought about. It's just the process of getting it through the channels and approved is, you know, is the delay. I mean, if I could focus totally on just this project alone, yeah, we could probably have been, you know, in this report have said that. But yes, it's not, these aren't new ideas. We've been discussing these around for months.
And I guess to that point, where is the flow? Where is it slowing down at? What are the processes that we need to do in order to fire that?
Well, it ties with the IHP. Because I, like I said, I've rewritten maintenance IHP one-year plan four times since January.
Okay.
So every time I rewrite that, then I've got to go and change...
And we get new information now.
We get new information until you guys restart that whole process again of where are you getting the monies from.
Okay. So let's say, just try to think outside the box, try to get this thing going. You create an entity separate from NHA to run property management. We as NHA board take NPI, give a buying amount and, you know, let's say we set aside ten million to buy these types of homes and invest into them and have a separate LLC from NHA run the property manager to rent these particular ones out. So there's a for rent sign in front of them and get them up and going. And you use that money to invest. So it's not part of the IHP process. It's a separate fund. And so we say, this isn't something that we have to run through IHP. It's a separate entity that takes care of these homes. NHA sells those homes effectively to this LLC that we also run. It's a separate entity, but it's a LLC that takes these types of dilapidated homes, invests in them and rents them out. And they come off the FCAST rolls and now they're available to not only low income, they're also available to middle and high income. Now, if they go to low income and we can provide those subsidies, fine. But we can get them occupied right away with middle and high income folks. That's one idea. But I mean, I'm just kind of kicking something out there that's like, what? It sounds like we're our own worst enemy as far as the processes. And we all play a role in this, but I'm just saying, it slows us all down trying to get these back out to people that could otherwise occupy them. But is that something that could happen? Is this something that we might be able to pull off in order to get these things up and going fast?
That's probably gonna be the presentation that we're gonna present during the revisions to the executive, our reserve accounts.
Okay.
There's a, there's a reserve policy that's been coming in at our board and there's an executive summary we're looking at. It was a good one, sir.
All right. Always to hear that and we can go from there. But I, I know that we initially tipped that approach. We're going, okay, we're gonna try to get these public rentals knocked out fast. That's great. Now we're kind of shifting into the next phase where we need to, it's gotta be everybody attacking both situations at the same time.
Yeah.
So, and we can do it. It's just a matter of like, how do we do it?
Yeah.
And we have to have a good conversation about.
There's three components out there that I tell everybody about. There's the land piece of property that we get, that it's transferred to a homeowner. Okay? So then, and then there's a structure that sits on that piece of property. And then there's a client that lives inside that property or occupies that property. The biggest problem we're having is transferring the land from one entity to the next. And I think, hopefully, that was discussed at the, at the land, the land conference that happened Thursday, Friday.
There is no problem.
There is no problem. Well, when you start actually transferring it, then it becomes a problem.
I heard there is no problem.
The transfer of interest.
Yeah.
I don't know about that. They make a big deal about us changing from one entity to the next. They're fast.
Given from Thursday's discussion with Mike Colonna to RDC, the NHA has all authority to process their own leases.
Can we get that in writing?
Yeah, can we get that in writing?
It was presented to RDC and it basically says that you guys package everything. Because RDC was questioning the length of time, the processing. So we've had that presentation and will follow it with a letter to Mike Colonna for what was presented. Because the leadership meeting that was there with RDC was looking at all the different leasing hindrance, delays, modifications. So it was presented at that meeting that there's no problem. We're speeding along. NHA's, they showed us policies, says NHA wanted this, we gave them all the rights and they can do whatever they, just package it and they give it to us. So all we need to do is send them a letter saying the CEO will be designated a signatory for the leasing to provide to them. So that's what we learned, me and Mr. Lee. So we're gonna follow that track and move forward.
All right, let's do it.
Wow, let's do it. I think we've been asking for the, let's go, let's check.
So did they talk about the TSR or the travel, that document? Yeah, that title?
The title...
TSR, I think it's called it.
The documents will be filed with the Naval Nation and the Naval Nation will turn, will file it with the Bureau of Indian Affairs, their title and records. And from there, it's finalized. All we need to do is package it, give it to them, and then they take the responsibility. Once it's in their hands, they take the responsibility. So, so something that we're gonna have to sit down, move forward with what opportunity that was provided to us last couple of days ago.
Okay. Any further questions?
One other question. Do you foresee another change in the IHP?
No.
All right.
We're moving forward.
And then the next IHP, is that gonna be set, you think?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna start working on that in February on some of the areas that we need to roll out. From what my, what the chief's plan is that we have monies that are ready to go with projects come October first. Instead of waiting for additional monies, we're gonna execute those projects that are accepted by HUD and move them through. And the biggest part of it is a lot of the new developments and then the ones that, the key areas that we've got to look at is the actual big sites, the Wonder Rock site, the Rock Springs, a couple of big development sites. We really want to push through with the monies we have. So we have those all ready to go. So as soon as HUD sends us that notice and your indoor housing plan is ready, is accepted, we will be ready to execute on October first versus traditionally wait until we get money. And so we're not gonna, we're not gonna sit down. We're just gonna execute what we have.
I think it's good as long as we have the designs all worked out, so, and try to avoid, avoid change orders in the overall design, process, report, construction.
The one big thing that I just, I think everybody needs to understand, Naval Nation has adopted and put out their Naval Nation Solid Waste Law regulations. So all scattered sites now are gonna have to meet us minimal design criteria for septic systems. And that septic system will impact our costs in terms of our, our facilities and utilities costs. Because they're requiring now, where we used to be fiberglass, they're requesting us to use concrete. So hauling concrete, concrete preform areas out there is something that, so we're still in, we gotta go back, talk to them because some of these sites hauling concrete is gonna be very costly on us. So those are some of the things that, laws that were passed, not really, they're good intentions, but if you're looking at deliverables and matter of fact, to haul them, it raises the price of the construction. So those are one of the things that we're gonna be up against, but how do we balance out, balance that out? And I think there's more consultations with Naval Nation because their intent is good because of the groundwater contamination that they're having within areas, but not looking at the realistic approach on some of these areas. If there's no watersheds, that's gonna be affected. Yeah, I don't think we can, we can, we can go with a different alternative. But if the watershed's gonna be affected, say like in the San Juan Basin, those all need concrete. But if it's away from watershed, we can still utilize fiberglass and everything. So it's a balance that we've got to look at. I think I don't intend to just assign those comments now, but so it is.
Except half the, the whole acre too, so you can increase the home site size.
Well, we found out, what did we find out yesterday, Mr. Lee? Well, for extra thousand dollars, you can buy extra acre land.
That's right, that's right.
So if anybody don't know, if you have one acre and you have your hog on or street corral outside of your one acre, you can go to Naval Land Department, pay a thousand dollars to increase up to another additional acre around your one acre. And that's for customary use.
But there's also a yearly fee that goes with that too.
The one thousand dollars is a one-time payment, but if you go into a yearly fee, that's thirteen dollars on one for twenty-five years. So it's easier to spend a thousand dollars versus paying the thirteen over twenty-five years. Over twenty-five years, you're gonna be paying additional roughly about eight hundred dollars. So, but that's what we've learned with, so... All the audience, if you guys want to increase your home site, it's available by law now.
I'll be right back. All right. So any further questions?
One other thing to add. You know, the discussions with HUD last week, they wanted, they wanted to see a pilot program for scattered housing, for us to supply houses to scattered sites, but allow the residents to maintain their, their current living practice. Now, how does that run with the solid waste regulation?
That's something that we've been looking at because of that adaptation plan that you posed to us and then looking at HUD criteria is solid, safe and decent living conditions. So that's something that we've got to look at internal, what is acceptable in terms of establishing that program. Because Rebecca's only brought, prior to talking, she was talking about their costs. Houses are coming in in three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand because we're paying for everything. And she's looking at what there's more, does the traditional Naval is more like just a house and they live the way they're living? Or she said, there's another option though that we can look at is a partnership. NHA builds a house, the housing client takes initiative to take on the power utility authority cost, the septic cost in there, balance out as, because you're giving a cost share in there. So there's some areas that we have to look at. But I think one of the biggest things is the house, Naval Nation law, the regulations they have, it's gonna impact us. But I think there is some areas in benefitries and this is where we've been looking at some options, how we're gonna deliver homes there. Some people are more, have been hauling water for over thirty years, they still want to do that. They don't want to have to pay for a bill or they don't want to have somebody constantly come and check on them. So those are some of the options that we're looking at. But I think that discussion that you all have is something to open the doors for us to actually look at the alternatives out there. Because if we can bring down the cost and help another person that's had a modest home, to be something to really look at.
Yeah, she talked about us supplying solar electricity and even went so far as to say we could haul water. I don't know. NHA water trucks going all over, filling up systems.
Yes, Dave, you mentioned that to me, but there's a big liability on that because of, the tanks have to be made a certain certification by EPA for water, plus they have to be cleaned at a certain time. Yeah, so she didn't really take that into consideration, the risk factors of us providing stuff there. And I tell you, even septic, our system systems are a risk to NHA we solve. If the client is not cleaning those, cleans that mold, can build the system system, that's why we highly are getting away from those systems. There's just too much liability on it.
That's all.
Just one more question. I know previous meetings we've discussed or commented about redesigning our homes to where, you know, it fits our current family situation. You know, a lot of the times, they don't want big homes. You know, we just want something small that can, that require the HUD standards of a home. Have we designed or went back to the drawing board to design smaller homes to where it won't cost as much? And have we, have we, you know, even gone to that drawing board to say, okay, this is, you know, something new that NHA is gonna do and these are our modern homes? You know, have we done that to...
We have, we've actually decreased, cut our houses back about two hundred fifty to about three hundred seventy-five square foot, which is the last things we're using five years ago. What comes into, what comes into play on some of these costs is when we start looking at some of these energy efficient, uh, elements there. We've taken out all the HVAC systems and all houses no longer use HVAC. We went back in just a basic force heat. But one thing that we gotta understand is that in the industry standards, LED, LED bulbs are coming in. Our new clients don't like those. They want old, that's their black bulbs. In three years to predicting, that's gonna be not fine, we can't find where... The industry's getting away from that, just the way the management do it, so it's still gonna, we shrink them down, but the cost is still gonna be there by some other areas. So it's just, um, we'll see what we get. Sometimes, one of the criticisms of, of home construction is that you build it, it's gonna be either too big, too small, but there's, there's never gonna be a fix-all, and that's the struggles that we're gonna be in. Because I know that Swift, that client's is saying, they're building a modest home, their homes are coming in about eleven hundred square foot. They're saying they'll say, "Well, it's not big enough." But the way their design mentality, looking at that, using central heat, stove, everything, no walls there, so the heat kinda, so it's around. And that's what we're looking at with this, the recent design is universal, no more hallways. Basically at the, the living room and then the rooms are attached with the central heating point, so everything can go in it. Because one of the biggest things you lose with hallways is lose that, that heating factor. You have to go through a larger system. So going to a universal helps out, too, because it, um, if you get elderly, you don't have to put grab bars down the hallways, restrooms, everything all within that central point there. So we'll see how this designs come out and then see what, um, but that's one of the biggest things that you, that we, in the home industry, there's challenges. As we go, if you look at some of the older houses we built ten years ago, fifteen years ago versus what we have now, I think the largest ones were Jim Dennis ones, those were huge. Um, very large homes. And those homes there, those people, they're nice, summertime, cool. Wintertime, they're a big burden, just to keep them warm, so...
Have we designed anything that's smaller, like, uh, when we first came on, we're trying to...
Shed.
Shed killers. I'm tired of seeing people live in sheds. Have we had, we have anything like that we've come up with?
We, um, uh, since I've been here, we've gone through three different, um, design phases as far as, as far as setting new projects. The last one that, that we're gonna be launching is on the agenda for the sixteen. That's gonna, that's gonna show our new, uh, new homes. The last batch we did was thirty-six, and that had to do with, um, we, we made the rooms a lot smaller, but we got a lot of complaints saying that, "I can't move in all my drawers and gesture, you know, you know, all my, um..."
Refrigerators.
Yeah, refrigerators and things like that. So we kind of, we, we beefed it up a little, we added more square footages to the rooms. So it's, it's flexing with, with, from one project to the next. And we're trying to, you know, we're trying to find a, a equilibrium there so that we can, we can, we can still meet the energy costs, but still meet the client's needs as far as the functionality of the house. So this next batch, sixteen that's on here, on, on the, on the agenda today, is, is gonna be the launch of our next, our next designs.
I think, I mean, the one thing we need to understand as Navajo culture, and this is hard, it's an audience listening, is that we have a lot of different individual living in these homes. We formed a house inspection. Everybody had a TV in their room. Couple of houses have refrigerators, old college refrigerator type in their rooms. So when we, when we started putting a lot of those additional stuff that the house is not generally designed for, that the rooms get smaller. There's a couple of rooms that, um, when we talked with, um, with, they had the California king beds. Those things are as big as a room, I mean, they're eight feet by, eight feet by eight feet. Those things take a lot of the bigger rooms, so, uh, and that's one of the things that as, as we go through, how do we adjust to different cultural or living styles? And that's one thing for us is, how do we do that? It's, I guess, some of it's gonna be a challenge as we go through, um, but, um, I think...
Well, I think on top of that, some of that's not a cultural thing, like king-sized beds or even California kings are not culturally significant. If, if you wanna put a California king or whatever in your bedroom and you only have eight by eight, that's up to you, but, you know, at the same point, uh, you know, you can put a twin in there, you know, if, if that's your, if that's your choosing, but, um, I think there is, there's only so much we can do to, to size these. Now, there's gotta be some standards, obviously.
Yeah, there is.
You gotta abide by, but, um, if everybody wants to put one TV in every room, that's their, uh, prerogative, prerogative, uh, but, there's only so much we can do in that respect. And so I think that we can build safe, healthy homes, uh, and make them culturally appropriate, uh, but, you know, we, we can't plan for every single contingency. I think we just have to recognize that, that, you know, people are gonna do what they're gonna do, but we gotta do our best to at least provide a quality home. And that's kind of where I'm getting at with the, the shed thing and seeing people do that. Those aren't quality homes. That, you know, we could offer a very comparable product for the same amount of money that these people are charged monthly and have an investment, rather than, uh, something that, you know, maybe they can do six months out of the year for a payment, uh, and then they get repo'd, or, you know, they owe an exorbitant amount of money. We can offer a smaller type home like that with solar or something like that incorporated into it, something where they can, you know, invest in this type of home and have the same type of payment or a little bit less, and then use some unconventional means like, you know, non-standard financing, uh, where they pay six months out of the year, you know, or, or they have some flexibility on how they pay their mortgage, because we know that the families don't necessarily work all year. Sometimes it's more, uh, uh, you know, seasonal work or those types of things, or they, you know, I, I think we have to kind of look at those options, too, as well as, um, you know, your standard mortgage and whatnot, but, I, I'm glad we're thinking about it, but we need to kind of come up with some solutions that we can incorporate faster, I think.
With the discussion Rebecca had with us, it made me think of containers.
Yeah.
She was talking about, you know, moving around. Like, we got that in North Dakota. You take a shipping container, you turn that into a living quarter.
Right. And people get really fancy with that, too. Those seem to be really nice homes like that.
Drag it wherever you want, you know?
When you self-contain.
Hook it up to your truck and drag it to another spot.
It's like a tiny home.
Tiny home. Metal container, you can stack it up, like those.
All right, anything further?
Um, Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think going back to construction, I'm in the blue section here, curious about what's going on in cornfields, modularing. Looks like we have a stop, stop work, do you want to do that?
Yes, we do. Um, we have a stop work order based on, um, some deficiencies that was, that was discovered on the previous modular homes that were set in place, mainly the porches. Um, they weren't properly, um, supported, they were seen offline off the central, um, on the central foundation system, so we're having them fix that. We also, and we're having a hard, and we're also fixing, uh, some other issues with them. And we told them that if you don't fix these issues, we're not gonna go any further on this project. So we're looking at, um, we've had discussions with the CEO and, um, we might be, um, we put a stop to it so that we can, uh, at least get some payback for the modular homes that were purchased the fifteenth. That's kind of where that's at right now, and, and what we're gonna do is, and what, uh, what was suggested to us was to get the money back, put it back into, um, into, uh, development, and then do regular conventional buildings out there, because we'll already have all the, uh, the civil designs would be already, or actually already complete. The water, the water system, water distribution system, the electrical distribution system and the gas distribution systems are already, they're already complete with the street, street worth rating and everything. Maybe just enough for us to put down maybe and use our, our recent designs for one, two, three, or out, out there, actually, we're just gonna do two and three bedrooms.
And just the porch, do we have any issues with?
Yeah.
Are they available to fixing it?
They're, they're fixing it right now. We're, we're holding back payment.
Okay.
On some of these.
Yeah, was it something that was overlooked, or is it just a structural flaw?
It was, it's a matter of both. Um, see, these were designed, built, and the most of the, the responsibility of the design was placed on the architectural engineering firm that's supposed to be part of the, and the, so what we're asking for is to make, is based on what we saw out there, we're asking for, um, um, the civil stamp that approved that design. And that, and those civil, those civil engineers, they, I mean, those structural engineers, they have O and M, um, insurance. So we're, we threaten them that if we don't, if you don't fix these units with your own money, then we're going to, uh, hold the civil, the structural engineer accountable for, for the flaw in the, in the design and the actual construction of it.
Since we're kind of in that same area, I had a question, and I just kind of put it out there to everybody and see what the thoughts are on it. But, um, it, it kind of relates back to the, the housing summit we had back in, I think, May or June. Um, we were talking with Navajo Nation Credit Services and, and, you know, they finance homes there on Navajo Nation. One idea that I, I was thinking of is, so NHA has all these home building plans, they've been stamped, they've been, they've been signed off on. Um, and my understanding of the process, it's very, it's hard for just somebody to come back and say, "Why I have a home site, but I need to find somebody to, to build and do all these things," and the, the process is probably either A, owners are B, confusing on where you need to go and what you need to do. Um, what is the thoughts, and I'm, it's to everybody, so I'm, I'm happy to hear any type of comments, but what are the thoughts about taking any of our tried and true building blueprints or, or housing blueprints and making them available to anybody, you know, on the Navajo Nation to utilize through their, 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 um, building process? So let's say, they, they come in, they get the blueprints and say, "This is the house I wanna build, it's already, it's, you know, tried and true, they, they're ready to go." They can take that blueprint and say, "This is the house we're gonna build," uh, and get the financing through Navajo Nation Credit Services, the home loan program. Is that something that can happen? Is it something that already happens? I, I don't think it is, but i- is it something that we can do as NHA for these plans that we, you know, bought over the years and just push them forward to the Navajo people and saying, "We've taken some of the hardest work of trying to find these things and, and, we're putting them out there for you to use as Navajo people." Is that something that can happen?
It, it, it can happen. Um, what are the biggest, uh, the only thing that you would have to, uh, that would play a, a, a variable in it would be the foundation design, based on how you're going in, because there's plumbing, there's plumbing underneath in the foundation, so it depends on which way the, um, the, the utility entrances are gonna be. So the, this past, the, the design we just did now, were designed to, to either go all, to, um, to have plumbing in all four directions, so add that flexibility. It's, it's mainly the water and the sewer, um, on the ground, what they call the underslab plumbing. That's, that's, that was our biggest concern there, but I, we, we, our designs are to where we can be very flexible as far as which way we're gonna do it out, or which way you're gonna exit out the building for your plumbing or enter for water. So that's, that's kind of, it can happen, it's just that's the, that's just the biggest variable part of it. I mean, the, the floor plans are structural, actually, they're structurally designed to, to support the floor plans. You have your support walls in the right places, your load bearing walls, everything else, and then you basically have a, a basic, uh, standard roof design that covers the, that covers the unit. So the only variable there, like I said, would be the, the, the coordination of the foundation and the plumbing that's underneath it.
The one thing, I'm trying to figure out if that, if this idea might work or if it'd be beneficial, I think it would, but, you know, the, the one thing that says, "Well, you're taking the, the money out of architects and people don't wanna do those types of things, small business and that and the other." And we're not limiting anybody's ability to go out and seek out an architect, it's just the people that maybe could see a design and go, "Oh, this is fine, I like this particular layout."
Yeah.
And they wanna build it. Why not offer that to all Navajo people, not just low income, uh, in the area that we operate in? But it seems like that would take one less burden off any, anyone that wants to be a Navajo homeowner on the Navajo Nation, and, and you can, you know, here's the designs and, and maybe there's a variance or something, you get somebody to sign off on.
Yeah.
On how the plumbing has to come in, but does anybody see any issues with something like that?
We just have to go another step, to pay for the foundation design.
Yeah.
For whatever, whatever they're looking at, slab or, you know, if you're doing it on gray, like, I guess that's most of their plans right now.
If, if you go online and, and type in floor plans, that, that, that mechanism already exists out there, you can buy any type of floor plan, you can look at thousands of floor plans.
But, I mean, that's the point, they have to buy it typically.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want somebody to sign off on it, we've already paid for these, these designs, there are designs as NHA, why not open it up and just provide them to any Navajo that would like to build a home? You know, and then they still gotta go out and find out like a construction firm, but maybe we can even say, "Okay, well, here's the plans and we have a standing bid for anybody that wants to operate." They don't have to get involved with the, you know, the grant type housing stuff, but we negotiate as a entity and saying, you know, "This is what we think you should be able to get this home for, here's the price, and here's three to five contractors that we, that we vetted somehow."
Small.
That, that, yeah, and they could be even smaller contractors or anything, and say, "These people know how to build this house."
Yeah.
You know, "It's still a contract between you and that contractor."
Yeah.
"But this is the price we believe as NHA you should pay for this particular design and house, here you go." And, and, and they get, they go to Navajo Credit Services, they get the contractor based on the list we provide.
Yeah.
There's a free, uh, blueprint, and maybe we add in the, the foundation, you know, design that, that needs to go for a particular area, but we've provided a service to people that I don't think is there right now, but it, it makes it much easier to say, "Oh, I can, I, I can build a home." So if land department's saying, "Well, we got the process down to six months, what's that next step?" And I think it's this, it's off, it's difficult. And so if we can, you know, at least provide a product out there somehow, a very low-cost product, meaning the blueprints are free, and maybe there's a foundation redesign fee to, to supplement that, but the print is free, and they just gotta go to credit services, and if they wanna get a home, then they already have somebody that's negotiated a fair price that, that can get the job done, and it's built by somebody that, that has a reputation for doing good work. But that's one idea, I just wanted to kick it out there to see what anybody thought about that.
Just you, um, kind of, your discussion was kind of what we're gonna present with this equity.
Am I stealing your thunder?
Yes, sir. I think those that, um, the presenter told RDC chairman and board, um, we're gonna cover that.
Okay.
Just, just giving you an idea, on Wednesday, we did meet with, um, credit services, Mr. Garcia, um, and their account people. Their struggles that they're working on is that a lot of the home loans that they have given out don't have building inspections, don't have certification occupancies, and those homes are falling apart, and the clients are not wanting to pay for their loans. So he wanted to look at NHA to say, "Okay, you guys have floor for plans." And with Mr. Nopas was discussing, "How can we build in the builders, the builders' administration to these contracts? How do we do that? And how..." So that's one of the discussions they're gonna research. So if they turn to us, some, somebody comes in, high income or whoever wants to finance them, they through credit services, give them the two hundred thousand dollar max loan, and they say they qualify, they say, "All right, NHA, these are the homes that they provide." They will provide this service for you for the inspection, this service for you for the, during the duration of the contract, will get a certain administrative fee, and they'll ensure that the house is safe and built correctly, and then we give it back to credit services, which, with certification of occupancy, and they give the homeowner their contract. So that's kind of the discussion that we have, um, because the biggest things that they, they enlightened us on was that they funded a lot of homeownership loans, and a lot of families are now having a hard time paying back. I guess there's a situation in Navajo... I guess there's a situation in Navajo, they had a designer bill, or somebody come in and bill, the house is now falling apart because there's no, their thing is that there's no, um...
There's no sheathing?
No, not sheathing, but, um...
Bad.
Testing for the soil, because it looks like it's sinking. So they're wanting to, they wanted to lean on us to see what kind of support can they give them, because they want to use some of their monies to reinvest on the Navajo side for homes. The other portion of this is that what we talked about is the home improvement loans. How can NHA help somebody's individual? Because the biggest problem that they're having is that people are coming in, but they have no home site lease or no, they want something to at least have control over that. So they're asking NHA, "How can you guys educate us on some of this information?" So Wednesday's discussion was some of the things that we rolled into this equity reserve. How can we balance that out through the whole thing? But in the last past week, going from Credit Service to Land Department, RDC meeting, and some of the changes happened, this is kind of the discussion that we need to look at. Because there's several areas that we can actually help if, which Credit Services really want to roll out. The gentleman that is a manager there, Mr. Garcia, he was the Wells Fargo District Manager.
Yep.
So he's wanting to really, he knows what the complications that they had at Wells Fargo to give home loans. He's wanting to really beat that up to where he can say how many more people he can help. But he wants our assistance to help him guide him through that. So that's kind of where we're looking, sitting at that. And as we get further in, I'm going to, I well recommend one of the board members or reasonable board to sit on some of the discussion, because then there might be some different ideasms or different visions that we may approach on that, of what we're going to do globally. Because that's what he's looking at, the global reservation aspects of monies that they're utilizing.
I think we have to set up a whole separate, create a whole separate NHA program to deal with all the other agency departments within Navajo that have, that do housing or some housing aspect, from the veterans to, you know, the mortgages and all that stuff. You know, we got that input from that, you know, the council, from the housing meeting that we had, you know, and everybody, I mean, everybody's failing in some type of way, but, you know, we can provide that extra support to make this a success, you know.
Super everybody goes.
So part of our executive discussion with this equity reserve portion is that our business development portion for housing, because there's some ideas of what we're talking about this SIP panel. It does take very much, probably fifteen, twenty people, prefab the halls, it's hauling out that reassembly. So those are some of the ideas that we're going to look at. But that, everything you covered is kind of what Credit Services was saying the same thing. How do you get these things out there?
Just to be on the record, I wasn't at that meeting, right? I'm not just reiterating what he said. Okay, fine.
You know, I think we've talked about this, and we've been brainstorming similar concepts, even Credit Services and the plans, and it sounds like that our answer to all this brainstorming over the last two years is this equity reserve, finding flexibility and funding. So I'm glad that we're there finally.
And it's evident from Mr. Wiletto's comments as far as that process of, I don't know if bureaucracy is the right word, but the red tape, it's slowing everybody down, and that's what it requires. If we can find a way to just circumvent it and go around that, or find a different route to get homes from Navajo people, then we should take it. And, you know, obviously, there's always going to be the tape, you know, the red tape that's involved and the stuff that slows us down from the federal government side of things, but we have other options, I think, that we just need to start rolling with and get those enacted.
So when are you going to come up with a decision on cornfields, whether to pull the plug on the contract or go?
The letters went out, and we're waiting for a response back on that, so we should have a response back next week.
And how's that affecting the schedule?
It'll actually, it'll get us to a position that we can finish off early, that won't launch the project. And so it won't extend the construction's schedule. We'll repay it, and then this is a consultation that we're going to have to have with it, because that money that was prepaid, take that back and we repay locks back. It'll close the finding, that'd be one good thing, close the finding, but we'll still have land that's already designed, ready to go, so we can add that back into the mix of what our new developments there.
So you probably come back to us with some sort of resolution?
It's already in the, it's already in the original, it's already in the original IHP as housing development. It's just a mechanism of how we're going to deliver it. So it's, so there will be no change, I would recommend it.
So it won't be minor homes?
Yeah. We just will have to pick up.
But for that project, there was a completion date. I don't see one on here.
That was a completion date for the design that they had before. I think they took that out because of the stop work order.
But there would have been a completion date for the construction, too.
There, we had, we had received a GMP and an established construction schedule for that.
So there won't be an effect on the IHP then?
No.
Okay.
I'd like to add a comment to, Terry and I had this discussion about, about a mechanism that's already in place out there as far as hiring contractors, licensed contractors, bonded contractors, called Home Advisor. And I use that for my home to do renovations, and there's a, you go on there, you ask, you list the contractors, and they tell you which ones are graded, and they're graded by the consumers themselves. So then you look at, you look at their rating, and you look at how they are, how they perform in past projects, and then they're selected. So the whole thing is consumer-based driven, so the better the rating is, the more work they get. So we've been, we've been looking at that, because we do collect ratings on our contractors. One of our best contractors right now is Sowers. So if we can do a mechanism like that, and work with Credit Services, and say, "Look, if we come up with this mechanism where we have a list of contractors that are available, and then we rate them as they help these individual people, or have the customer actually rate them." And then, and then they, that, that increase, that, like I said, it's quality, the quality of the work is being driven by the consumer ratings.
Free market.
What's the status of the Cuddy Eye project?
The modernization?
Yeah.
I have it here.
I'm looking at it, and there's no issues, I guess.
There's no issue, and it's at 21% complete.
That's on schedule then.
Yeah, that's on schedule.
The Steamboat, what's going on with that? Homeownership rehab?
Oh, the subrecipient one. That should be in here.
Straight after Two Visis Street.
Yeah.
So is this just saying it's completed, and it'll no longer be part of our book? It says project 100% complete.
Yeah, it's final month report. So that's going to be no longer part of our, our reporting mechanism. That's under, that's done with the Steamboat Commission Government. They're like, it's like a subrecipient.
Yeah. Oh, the Talani Lake, is that going to get readvertised? The demolition?
It's going to get rea, the problem there was that we were getting really high numbers, so what we did is we, we broke up the scope of work. We're going, we hired, we're hiring a hazmat firm to go in and test the units, and then give us a price to abate if they find any hazardous material. And then we're going to go back out and do a separate contract just for demolition purposes. We got to bait, we got to make sure that we don't, we're not dealing with any hazard material, because if we do have hazardous material, and you abate it, there's all these protocols you have to go by, and you have to go to a specified landfill that accepts that type of material.
That wasn't taken into account beforehand?
Well, before, what they wanted to do was just do the whole lump sum, and include it with the demolition and with this construction, but when we got, when we put that scope of work out, the numbers were very high because, because they didn't have the actual testing requirements that were, that's going to be needed to determine the amount of material that they're going to have to abate and haul off.
What are they concerned about?
They're concerned about, well, it's all, this is all risk, it's a risk-driven issue. So if there is, like I said, if there is hazardous material that's present inside that, you have to, there are special protocols you have to do. You have to enclose it, and you have to make sure that everything is done. So that takes, that takes, that takes a lot more money to funds to do the actual payment of it. But if there is nothing, if there's no, if there's no finding of any type of hazardous material, then you just, you just pretty much take a bulldozer, tear it down, and haul it off to approved landfill. So that's, that's, that's the unknown factor that, and once you enter that, once you, once that unknown factor becomes in the contractor's minds, then they start to bid high, based on, they're just saying, "Okay, we're assuming that this is going to happen."
I would have thought, based on our records or an ASBilt, that we know what was in the building.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have that information.
But we can't send anybody in there to do the check before?
Yeah, that's what we're doing now. That's why we hired somebody to actually go and do that certified tester, and then they'll, they'll give us a report on that.
This A and P date, 2016, I mean, why wasn't it looked at back then?
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. You just got to think, think these out better beforehand, I guess, and learn from the past.
Yeah, and we inherited this situation before. It was, it wasn't in our ballpark. So now, and there's a lot of things that we've inherited since.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of the way this looks, you know, with our, with our finances, because the beginning point back in 2016, I don't know where the money could be right now, or how that could be designated, has been re-designated and all of that, so, you know, that's, it's my, it's my concern with such a long-drawn-out activity that really didn't start off the right way. So, but going forward, yeah, definitely a good change to make. The Whipper Will, where's that stand then?
That's the same issue there, and the situation is getting worse by the day, because that place is getting vandalized, like you, I mean, it's just like people are, it's like, it's like a mission for people to go over there and vandalize it. It's, it's just getting worse. Every time we go out there, we bid it out, we get high numbers, and then we rebid again, and we go back out there, the conditions are worse, and it just keeps, it's just like a snowball effect, what's happening out there.
Is this something we can hire security to come in and just be there?
We can, but that's going to add additional project costs.
Right, but I mean, what, I mean, is it, we're going to pay there vandalism, or we're going to pay whether it's security?
Yeah.
Why not just cut our losses and get somebody just to be there to make sure that we don't have vandalism going on? Because the end result is, what if it goes up in flames?
Yeah.
How much does it cost? How much was the $40,000 we paid to security per year compared to having to redo the whole project?
Is the intent still to turn it over for law enforcement to use?
The intent is, well, that's the question we've been asking is, if we're going to turn it over to law enforcement, then it changes the whole programming of the building. See, the buildings are designed to a certain, the functionality of what it's going to be doing. So you have to, you have to come up with a program, and then that program sets the design standards of what you're going to be following. So, and I, and I asked that question is, where are we going to, we need that decision of, are we going to reprogram this building, or are we going to go as is, as a group home? Because it's been originally designed as a group home.
My understanding is we're redoing it for the police.
Yeah, but the police department, so on the police department's side is they have no O and M cost. And that's, and that's the reason why the situation happened in the first place, is because the client did not have any recurring funds to take care of the building.
Why did we pay for it?
Shoot, I don't, I don't have that information offhand.
Just demo and payback, huh? Otherwise, we'd rather an elderly group home through NHA.
So the previous two group homes that I, that I put back into circulation way back when I first started, they're now faced with the same situation.
Vandalism?
No, that they don't have the O and M costs to maintain the building.
Yeah.
Who was that one place that's doing a good job? We went out there with Congressman O'Halloran.
Ganado.
Ganado.
How far is that from where we're talking Whipper Will's, I mean, like, they wanted to?
That's about a good hour, an hour drive, hour fifteen, yeah, hour and a half drive. That, that project is now in jeopardy from what I heard, that they changed the functionality of the building. Now it doesn't meet state requirements, and now the state funding is starting to dwindle.
Well, I think we need to have a talk with Dwayne about the status of Whipper Will. Because I thought the intention was to turn over the police and, you know, and with the end of not having to pay back the money, putting it to useful purpose. But from what Ernest is saying, there's no purpose.
Well, we stay with the original purpose, are we?
Well, there's a point where we have to draw a line, where we say, "It's going to be too costly for us to get into the, into the nursing home business," you know? And if we take that on, then that's, I don't know what the cost is going to be on that. So we've got to get that all worked out. But I thought from the beginning, this was going to be for the police. And this doesn't even include the, the homes that people are squatting in over there also, you know, adjacent to it. What's the status of that? There's like sixteen or eighteen.
Yeah, the Hogans that are sitting out there.
Yeah.
There's still people living out there, and some of them are squatters, some are actual people who are, who was given, who were given those units. We did include it as part of the walkthrough at this last pre-bid meeting, and so we put it back. It was not originally included in the overall scope, but now that we were, we were out there, we decided to put it as part of the scope.
I don't know if I ever sent out the photos to you, to you all commissioners, I took of, I mean, the vandalism is extreme inside that facility, you know? It went through the walls and demolished just to get, pull out the copper, piping and wiring, and the, there's a, there's a fire, fire facility next door for, you know, pressurizing the water system for fire protection. That's all, well, the machine, most of the components are still there, but, when I was there anyway, but I don't know, it's just been heavily vandalized. And then that, all those Hogans, most of them are demolished on the inside, and then there's people that are just squatting there. And that was all for the police to come in and work. What's the project, do you know what we'd have to pay back for Whipper Will? The elderly home?
Not sure about that, but I can look at that.
Because my understanding was we're going to use it for police, the police were going to use it, but Ernest is saying there's no O and M on their side, so we're going to end up with a building that we just really rebuilt, that's going to be another vandalism target big time.
I think that the police bar diversion from what I was looking at was just like a rental aspect, so it was still, it was still the operational maintenance, but we'll sublease it for utilizing for their barracks and sleeping quarters. So basically, they'll be paying us for rental, and we'll be taking care of the building.
But we rebuild it as an elderly group home?
Yeah, so all we need to do is basically redesign it. The only thing we need to do if we're going to convert that is just change, we can't change the activity, we can basically just use it as a, like a transitional housing type. But it's trying, we've got to keep to the same, the same determination when it was first created. So that's kind of, that's the information that I have, but they weren't going to actually give it to them. They were just going to sublease, and then they pay rent to us, and we'll do the operational maintenance. The other portion of what you're talking about with the Hogans, the one things that we talked about, because of the state of conditions there, is take them down, and then actually have pieces of property that we can redevelop again, similar to Longley Lake. Because of the miners... Um, because of the, my understanding from, uh, staff is that there's already a house that burned down again, Hogon, um, and had the potential of meth, um, manufacturing there. So that'd be one option. They're not very big units and they're already heavily, um, it's just now, how do we, how do we engage the chapter to actually say, do we really need this? And that's one of the biggest things, is engaging the chapter, take responses like, well, your discussion. Uh, there's a lot of good ideas out there, but it's actually the community, what do they really want? Compared to long-term, to the past, or we build, they will come, we gotta get away from there.
Well...
And that's the biggest initiatives that we need to look at.
Are we considering these Hogans and then the Whipper Will facility as separate now or are they together?
No, they're together.
They're together. And so what is our break-even point? Where, where, where is the threshold where we say, we just tear these down?
Just doesn't list, doesn't list in the result. It just lists the Whipper Will facility.
What I can do is, um, within the next two weeks, we can give executive summary, I'll send that report to you all and then I'll give you some recommendations, what we can look at, what the options of repayment, what we can utilize. The other options too is that, um...
We either demo it or just pay back hut.
Yeah.
Demo, payback.
The other option is, is that site suitable for, um, multipurpose condition for the community? Uh, so those are some of the things, we look at some options that we can look at and then looking at the, the costs, how much money was invested in there? And then the survey, how much, um, how much land do we have in that, um, location?
'Cause I'm hearing that, you know, unit burning down or possible meth and stuff like that. That's on us, you know, that's, it's our responsibility to maintain that type of stuff. And if it's just sitting there, then we're the one doing the harm to the community as well as anybody that's doing those negative things.
It's, it's unfortunate that the, the failed sub-reciprocates projects, these community buildings have failed. And it puts a real big burden on us as we move forward. How do we do this? Because there is still a lot of, um, needs out there, but that's prioritizing that. We heard that over the whole, uh, meeting with RDC. What do we prioritize? All of this stuff that, where people are, are looking at, 'cause they look, they were talking about the, the population gaps that they have out there and services. So I think that's one thing that, um, we need to really evaluate as we move forward. But the one thing that, um, is just how do we fix some of these problem trials that we have in the past? 'Cause the majority of us sitting here at this table, that wasn't our decision at that time to approve those things. But now we're at this decision, at this time, sitting there, what do we do with the best interest of these, of these, um, properties for the Naval Nation and for NHA?
Well, I'm surprised this isn't a finding on us.
It is a finding.
Well, I'm surprised they're not lighting a fire in those.
Well, I think, and I think we gotta light a fire under ourselves to come up with some sort of solution now, because the way I see it personally is that if we don't, we're the ones encouraging meth production in Whipper Will. If, if we don't fix this very soon, now, I think that it's coming to the chapter Whipper Will and saying, look, we see these aren't, A, in good condition, B, they're adding a negative environment to the, to the community. We anticipate having to just tear these down. Because they're not being utilized in any type of way that was originally imagined. If there's not a need there, in a similar way to Talani Lakes, was obviously there were, the, the way we built them as a, as an entity was not gonna fulfill the need, uh, of the community. You know, we, we need to, we need to take some action on it, I mean, because it, otherwise we are, A, responsible and, and, and we're the ones harboring that type of negative, uh, situation in a community.
I could tell you, I, I was able to drive right up, right up to the building itself. So there was no gate in place locking off, you know, the building. And then the individual that lives in the Hogon, you know, maybe we can find a, another place for them to live. You know, a unit out there, so we can just fence off and close the whole area, you know, for security reasons.
Not sure why the structure was not fenced, but, uh, there was some funding available for, in the budgets for fencing for security. Um, I'll look into that, find out what we're sitting on. Just long head's one.
Just to add to the conversation, for Whipper Will, there were fourteen units, the cost of that was one point four million. And then for the elderly assisted living, the cost on that was three point two million.
And what are we looking at is?
Five total. Five total payback.
But, uh, but as far as like what we're gonna fix, uh, I know we came in, we put the bid out there and they were too high and we pulled it back. What was the lowest bid?
The lowest bid was over a million dollars. That we had the rates.
So we got five million into it and was that one million part of the other units too, or is it just the one building?
Just the building.
Do we have any type of estimate on what the other buildings would cost?
No, we, that's why we added into the scope of work this time around. But the build, like I said, it was, it, the, the, um, the reinvestment cost on that was originally estimated at seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Now at a million?
Now we're, we're over a million.
But it's probably gonna be, what, a million and a half, maybe, maybe higher?
It's just gonna get worse.
It's gonna get higher.
It's gonna get higher and higher. So, and I, I, we, we are gonna reach that point to where, we're gonna say we just demo it and we do the whole thing over. 'Cause the reinvestment cost is gonna, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a lot higher.
When do we get the bids back to find out if we have something within the range, we do fourteen, add it into it?
I've seen that they've done even in the ceiling, so I don't know what they've done, if they've structurally damaged it up, the roof or something. That's a shame, I mean, I, I thought that was on track to get fixed and put in the police hands.
Mr. Chair, if, um, I can ask, Dwayne, when you're looking at options, you know, consider, um, well, for one thing, that location is not the best location. Especially, you know, the access to it. I think there's a direct route to the road, which is a lot shorter.
Turd road?
Yeah, and so, you know, demo it and put it, put the facility or the intent somewhere else. And, you know, here it goes to where the chapter has land and we went for it. But the land was way out in, in an island, you know, in Putnam.
Yeah, I guess that's one thing that, um, we've looked at some of these locations. Where, where's best suited if we have, like, we repay back, using that one, where can we, where can we place it again? You know, and that's something that we have to look at, 'cause, um, traveling eight miles to get to the site from, from turning off that blue gap to there is, uh, it is a, it is a burden on individuals, you know, to travel that road.
The crazy thing is with elderly living way out there on that dirt road when it rains.
They can't get out.
It's hard to get out. And the other way, you got the, they don't have a bridge across the major wash over there, so that, that washes out. I ran right into that, I mean, I didn't drive into it. I had to turn around and go back the way I came in. And as I was going in, there was, there was an ambulance coming out on that dirt road, so.
Well, not only that, the need over there is not too high. I mean, a couple of Brenton and Fignan, you have seventeen and H O is three. You know, just taking that into consideration as well too, you know? Something to really think about.
Yeah, I think that, um, that was kinda...
I like the idea of putting it somewhere else, if we have to.
Well, I'll, we'll provide that information.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we need to get some sort of report on like the overall strategy on this, 'cause it, it doesn't make any sense to put it further out in areas that are hard to get to, hard to respond to. Um, I mean, there's, obviously there's a need in the investment all over, but we need to strategically place these. So the, the, you gotta, you gotta find people to work at the elderly home, okay? And if it's eight miles off the beaten path, why did we do that when we could've put it in an area where people could walk to work? You know, and, and those are the types of other business considerations, I think, that we really gotta factor in that apparently in the past weren't factored in and they, and they just kind of had that build it and they will come attitude and it's obviously not gonna work.
Well, that's the sub-recipient.
Yeah, true.
Um, question about Bird Springs. Another elderly, but, uh, what's the status on that?
Is it on your list?
I see it on here.
It's in the evaluations, it's re, it's been re-advertised and it's under evaluations now.
About Talani Lake, because the costs were too high?
Yeah, the same. All, all three projects that we're running into is costs, the reinvestment cost is just way too high. I mean, it's just like, oh, we can't, we can't, we can't award a contract that's gonna be like almost a third of the original investment cost.
And this was just a renovation, we're not dealing with demo or, or anything else.
For Talani Lake, as of August first, uh, the recommendation is that they had canceled the solicitation. They were gonna re-advertise the scope of work for the demolition, only, just for the demolition. They were gonna go back to design, bid, build, but not do it as a design build. So they're going back.
Can we just start our own company? That we own our own division?
Give Arnie a dozer.
Groundbag me.
I mean, it's, like, some of these things need to happen. It just, we've been dealing with it for quite some time, decision was made back last December-ish.
You can just get an excavator and just pick it up off the ground. Put it in the dump truck, you know?
Is that feasible? That's something we can do? Just have our own division?
We can put it in a fleet, find out what we need to...
Is there any particular, I guess, uh, certifications that we need?
Operator, operator and probably just, uh, risk, risk insurance, that's all we need. Risk insurance, we have all the equipment, um, so it's just getting a, a large enough excavator to do that and then I do your, do your own site control, safety site control, dust management, that's pretty much. But the, the risk, uh, insurance for the bottom part of it just for tearing down, it's not very much.
I, I mean, is it...
Think about it.
How much money have we spent advertising, re-advertising, people have to go back and do all these things? It just seems like if we're having problems finding people that will do this in a cost-efficient manner, maybe we just gotta do it for right now. I'm not saying it's gotta stay like that, but the, the equipment that you use holds its value and it can be utilized for other things. And maybe it's a temporary or something, maybe it's something we don't keep active, it's a kind of a acting division to get this stuff torn down, because it, it costs money to keep the fences up, it costs money just to have it sit there and be a liability. You know, it's, I've seen other homes get demolished or razed in a day and, and and you get the site people off and you, you take it off and, and you're done. It, but it, it's, it's September almost, you know, and this is last December, we were out at the site to physically look at it. And we're getting dinged in the social perception that nothing's happened and, and it's true. We're not doing enough, I don't think, to get these things going. Now, granted, I'm not placing blame uh, and saying, well, you know, we just haven't been able to act. I think these are legitimate concerns to say, we're not gonna pay X amount over because you're the only game in town. But I think that if we're gonna come up with solutions to say, you know, this stuff needs to happen, then, then maybe one of the things is, we gotta do it ourselves. You know, um, and, and if that's the case, then that's the case, but is there any issue with that? I mean, and I'm putting it out there to everybody, and everybody's welcome to respond. But is there any issue with us just taking care of it ourselves?
We have done it in the past with single drilling units, where we have taken the units down and hauled them off. Yeah, so it's just, um, obviously looking at the cost aspects of it, but, uh, we've done it in the past with single drilling units. So we can look at that, let me, um, sit down with, uh, look at all the different risk factors in terms of insurances and, and equipment we have. Majority of what, um, contractors do, they don't buy the equipment, they'll rent them. Uh, and that's kind of looking at the area, so, um, let me, let me, let me sit down and look at some of these areas. They're dealing with Talani Lake, if there's environmental there, um, I believe we have a couple of staff still hold their asbestos and lead paint testing, which we could do quickly and just send it off to samples, um, but I think, uh, let me, Ernest brainstorm this and come back within the next couple of weeks and send you guys a, a formal, um, executive write-up on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
I think that's a great idea and a possibility. Um, so my comment, our adding on to that, I understand that we had, um, two vacant homes in Los Titi that were in a fire, is that true? So you might as well just throw that in if they're burnt down, you might as well.
I'm not aware of two houses.
Those weren't ours.
But they weren't?
No, those are the three houses that were associated with that church by, by the trading post.
By the trading post?
Right, those old warehouses.
'Cause there were four structures in Los Titi over the last week or so.
Right.
I had heard that, a couple of them were in A T, but they weren't?
No.
And I guess here's one idea. If we create this type of division and we hold the insurance and we wanna keep our people busy, if they got, we have a demo unit, offer that particular service to the community and say, look, if you need something taken down, we can do it. And we gotta figure out a place where this stuff is gonna go, but why not take care of the, I guess you could call it blight, but, you know, there's, there's structures out there that should be taken down, that aren't. And if we could play that role, we gotta do it anyway, because we can't find a cost-efficient manner, why don't we just take care of that and get it going? And if we pass it off to some other entity at some point in the future, or maybe it does become cost-efficient for other companies to come into it, there's that, obviously there's a liability, but we deal with liability all the time. You know, um, and, and if we're gonna keep the, the equipment rolling and we can just cover our costs on it, then, then why not? Something to think about. Any other questions for Mr. Franklin?
Uh, I'd like to add that, um, as I said, there's three components to, to, to the situation out there, the land it sits on and the structure and the plans. This land is, was, we are, I think we're almost done as far as getting that, that property into our name, right? Yeah, all three, all three, um, that was one of the things that realty and title were, were, were entrusted to, is to get those, to get that transferred back in. And, and it goes back to what was said by Mike Colonna. Mike Colonna says a lot of things, but when you actually go through the process, it doesn't, it's not as smooth as he says it is.
I think with better communication of us holding hands as entities, walking down, that's what we can do, that's what we can do to facilitate that type of, of, uh, understanding, where we understand that, that here's where the hiccups are, let's, let's address it, but we gotta have near constant communication, because we're the major players in that respect, and I think you had said that, NACA, uh, NTWA, Land Department, us, and, and others play such a strong role, we need that kind of central nexus point where we're all working together. I mean, if you create something like that where you take the delay and all that stuff out of the mix, I mean, that's the path forward, I think.
A question on the overall, uh, the fast-track project stuff that Craig had initiated, put into action, has, are those projects continuing on in a different status?
They are still in the RFP process, uh, we, we've, um, we are in the, uh, the interview process now, we're gonna be entering the interview process to select, to, to get the final selection of the design bill firm that's gonna be running this project. So we already have all the environmental, um, the release of funds for, for planning, for the planning phase has been put in, budgets have been set up, and now we're just waiting for, once, once, once the entity is selected, then we will issue a notice proceeding.
I see one here, this forest lake, they've got a, a sweat house. It says archaeological site, so how could the environmental be signed off on that? They, they haven't solved this thing, it says a potential roadblock.
Well, um, uh, planning activity is considered, um, territorial exclusion and that's to make sure that... sure that, that you discover things like that. So then, that, that issue now has made that site non-feasible because of the findings that were found during the, during the planning and assessment phase of that project.
So these 15 PR units are not gonna go forward then?
They're not, they're not gonna go forward at that site. So we're, we've, we are looking at, I have my, the, the planning people are now meeting with the chapter to find an alternative site to put those 15 units down for that area. And the reason why we're suing that is because we do have a resolution from that community that's asking for that. We're asking for those 15 minutes.
Do you have any more that have hit that categorical exclusion also?
Excuse me?
We're talking...
All, all, all the ones that Craig put into, put into, put into the fast-tracking? All those, yeah, all of them have categorical exclusion, release of funds on them.
And the ones that didn't?
Yeah, the ones that didn't, the ones that weren't on the IHP. He put a lot of, there was several other projects that were, were put into that fast-track, but they were not on the IHP. Therefore, our environmental person stated that if they're not on the IHP, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pursue a release of funds. Because last time we did that, we got dinged by HUD saying, this is not on IHP, why are you asking for a release of funds?
Yeah, we canceled those.
I have a comment to that. I remember those were on previous IHPs.
Yeah.
And those are continuing projects that were just listed and then they were shelved and then they were recently discovered to be incomplete. And then like that, there were different issues of why they were just shelved. And a lot of those, I mean... I'll stop here. I'm just gonna stop there. Because it's like...
Well, Forest Lake was put on there in 2016.
Yeah. And then cornfield since 2015. And it's like, like I said before, you know, it seems like we as NHJ tend to drop the ball. We do not do the monitoring. If you look at all of these, you know, sub recipients, you know, and we have all of these findings and over and over, they're on there every month. And how are we assisting? And how are we keeping track on those to where we don't end up and say that, you know, these were past administrators and yet we inherit them? You know, that's where my concern is and over and over, you know, we, we just need to get these going and developed. And everyone is looking at NHJ to get these up. But yes, I do understand there is a process, you know, it does take time. But these were years ago. And they did have funding to it and were stalling and just like the one on Crown Point, you know, there is a change of order. Now it's gonna cost additional million dollars. You know, that's, that's where I'm concerned. And, you know, we do have the money as NHJ to build these homes, to get these homes to the families that are out there. And I think, I mean, that's our major business out there is to provide homes, quality homes to the families that are in need. And I think we need to get back on that and do that and not find excuses, but find ways to get these done and completed. So, I mean, we could just sit here and discuss why they haven't been done. But have we thought about other ways to get them done on a faster pace? That's all.
I think, I think they're, they're doing that now. You know, we're trying to, trying to get those things done. But some of them have hiccups. And that's what I'm trying to look for is the hiccups here. Like with this Forest Lake and the archaeological issue. And this Mitten Rock access road, you know, that was started back in 2015, I think. But it's a round and round with BIA. And now they're saying you gotta go to Navajo DOT and get their involvement too. And reading about the agencies kicking the can from one to the other, especially BIA and then NTUA and NDOT and all this stuff, it just, it aggravates me from reading this other resolution that we have before us to approve because, you know, the Crown Point went through all that with people not even being able, the, the agencies not even able to find easements that they'd signed off on. And then delaying our project and costing us millions while they try to find the proper paperwork, you know? And we end up having to pay that bill. That just really aggravates me. But I, I think our people are trying to get these projects completed as quickly as they can. We just have these, these hiccups with working with other, other, other bodies on the outside.
Do most, so to that point, I think, do most of these other entities that we're dealing with the hiccups, do most of them fall under RDC?
All of them do.
Okay. Is there a point where we can write a letter to RDC and we can say, these are all the major players that we're having hiccups with, can you, by order, by legislation, force us to sit down in the same room, something like this, where we got all of the heads, and meet at least once a month, maybe twice, to keep everything rolling? Because that's, I mean, it gets lost in the shuffle of, I guess, bureaucracy from entity to entity. If they all fall within RDC and we can get legislation passed that forces us all to sit down in the same room and communicate and say, this is the particular project we're looking at. We need to be updated on that. This is, you know, it's, it's this type of planning that major cities typically do on a weekly basis. You know, I've been in rooms similar in size of this where everybody there from the city was there. They had a representative there and they talked about it and they said, I can get, I can get back to that. You know, you look at the president's office, they have a weekly meeting at Quality Inn where all the department directors are there and everybody's communicating. We need that type of communication from all of our partners. And they are our partners. You know, we all work together to get this to happen. But the disconnect in my mind is that we never really ever talk to each other all that often. I mean, we do it here and there, you know, go from here to here. But even hearing about Commissioner Lee's experience of being able to go over to that land meeting and all the information he's been able to gather, if we could force everybody, and maybe it's a law that needs to get passed or maybe it's a, you know, a monthly meeting that's mandatory for all the highest people to go to a summit every month, if we have all a common oversight committee, and I think that's what we need to go to, to RDC and say, look, we need help on getting everybody to the table every month. We have to be here. We have to have, you know, maybe it's a bigger room than this. Maybe we get everybody we can and we facilitate that. I would, you know, maybe we're the ones that inspire everybody to come. We bring the lunch, you know? Everybody comes because they have to come. But the communication is there because now we're all in the same room. We could say, here's a project that we're working on. This is where we're having hiccups. How can people help? And the other entity says the same thing. How can we help? And NHJ can say, what? We can do something like that. And I think that, that is one way we can probably inspire these more fundamental shifts on how we can all work together. Because right now, it's not, it's not working very well.
Chair, if you recall, probably two and a half years ago, we pulled together everybody at the, at the request of Honorable Associate in RDC. We had a roundtable, the new development meetings, we sat everyone. The first two months went very well. NTUA only came one time, others. And that was the discussion of what you just mentioned. We brought up all of the projects, the nine sites we had, the projects that we were wanting to look at. And I think that it is true that at that time, we had all of RDC at those meetings. But I think one of the biggest struggle was, is everybody having the ownership. And I think that's, I go through all of the projects that they're doing there, that they're trying to initiate and get kicked off, bowls back to NTUA utility commitments. We have the Swift Homes. They're still waiting for utility connections for apartments. We're still waiting for the power connections from service line agreements. We learned yesterday, service line agreements from BIA, it doesn't, all you do is just give them notice, we're connecting to the line. There's no real formal process. And I think that's some of that, that's certainly why. I think that we really need to bring in BIA right away and then make sure that we follow this legislation and take on the, take that bull by the horns and see if RDC is willing to give us those capacities to do the work. So I think that's one initiative that I'll follow through and touch base with BIA, the realty agent, and get in those areas. Because I think, I know for a fact, those are the biggest struggles we have. I mean, the cornfields, we went through three different areas there. Yes, it started in 2015, but we never could get a utility combinations, consumptions in that area. To this day, they're still working on that. Because we want to build 100 acres just south of the Burnsite School. And we haven't gotten those, because in order for us to design and look at houses, we gotta look at the community utility capacities to give us some groundwork. And in the past, we've built and waited, and this is where it impacted us. Yes, we've learned the practices in the past, but going forward, we're good, that unity. I mean, there was a discussion yesterday, Kialan McGee brought out, he says, I'm not feeling comfortable when NTUA comes to us and asks us to leave their debt ceiling to a billion dollars. Why are we not getting services of utilities for the nation? What's going on for eastern agencies is they have the utility authority, they can get service in one month, where our own tribal enterprises is making our people spend more money and asking the Navajo Tribal Government to increase their debt ceiling to provide service. Where is this actual money that our clients are paying going to these services? That was his question back to everybody sitting in the audience there. Because what they were being told of all these different areas, we've learned that all the waivers for right-of-way has been, they don't have to pay for land appraisals. But APS, Continental Electric, they pay for land appraisal to the nation. But NTUA doesn't have to pay for anything. Secondly, they are given waivers for bonds for right-of-ways. I found out the waiver for bonds, in case electrical line drops, that bond covers all of the emergency costs that has to happen. House gets burned down, whatever. That's what the insurance bond is for, which I never knew about. And it's what the Bureau's asking for because it's still federal in the land that the Bureau has a date, is entrusted. So we'll do another reach out and do, see what we can do about pulling all the entities back together. And that's the one, one thing that we'll see, try something different from what we've done in the past, and see where the niches are. Because I know the, the one that was always here is SWIFT and EPA. Those are two offices that were always here every meeting. All the other ones came and gone. And I think it was just out of frustration, Mr. Honorable Associate, was that nobody wanted ownership to that.
Well, and before we go to Madam Vice Chair, my, my point is on that, Mr. Associate, at that point, wasn't even on RDC. And I know that we have a strong support and a good relationship with RDC. And I think that if we can put that type of legislation together that says, you will meet every first and third Wednesday of every month. You gotta be in this room. RDC will be there. All these entities will be there. We'll send an invite out to BIA, invite out to the executive office. But the entities that sit under RDC are mandatory, they have to be here. And it's not just like, you know, people lower down on the ranks. It's the highest ranking people here with their needed support staff. They're there in the room to make the decision to get these things going. But if, and that's why I'm saying, it almost has to be legislated at that point because that's what happens. People go, oh, I'll show up for the first meeting and we leave. We can play a key role.
You can have meetings of CEOs.
Yeah, exactly. Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think a legislative directive would be very, very helpful. In our meeting last week with HUD, we had a short discussion about regional planning and having all the planners there, which are all these entity partners and what called them. But maybe just looking at legislation to require various reports regarding planning, water capacity, all of Navajo water capacity and wonder on water capacity in all these communities that are subject to future development. If there's a legislative reporting requirement, there's no way around it, it seems. In addition to requiring attendance of CEOs of these entities, I think that's really, really important. Unless it's directed by the RDC, they're not gonna come. I mean, I think they have a history of not coming.
That's why we need that, that kind of strong language legislative fix. Because we're very fortunate here that we can have the bandwidth to host. I mean, like, if they're present, they can be here on video conference.
That too.
If it's gotta be via phone because they're over in some other area, fine. But you say, look, there's a, you know, let's say six-hour meeting or eight-hour meeting or whatever it needs to be, this is the day that you need to be here. This is how we're gonna fix all these other bigger issues. Because that communication is one of our biggest hindrances at this point. Any further questions for Mr. Franklin before we move on?
One other question. What's, because I spent almost the entire day with Tehozhly yesterday. What's the status of the infill housing over there? Because they'd submit, they gave me the paperwork for it with a request sent back in 2018. They actually wanted to look at the feasibility study that was conducted by Frank McGee Senior on the 20 sub, 20 public rental units in East Tehozhly, the construction of those.
That project, that was one of the ones that was taken off the, taken off the solicitation listing because it wasn't, appeared, it didn't appear on the IHP.
The other areas of that was that they didn't have water capacity. There were, the two water facilities there were turned down, were shut off because they were pulling out low-grade water. And they kept burning the system out. So we couldn't really plan and look at developing it. Secondly, was that Brian went out and looked at, we did use the digital elevation modeling for that there. The slope cut and to rebuild it back out was gonna be a concern because of the sheet flow that off of the area. He said there was a 16-foot drop from one boundary to the other end, which will create a lot of impacts for how we're gonna discharge water. The second part of it was the utility manhole. If we build down further, we're gonna have to use a lift station to put sewer back up to the manhole to get back down. So we were sitting on a hump there. And that was about, I'm not sure if he ever finished his report part of his departure. But that was one of his concerns because I know at that time, Mr. Dugald was pushing the project. And then we, that's the time when we had to get the, we had to get a water truck out there. There was just a lot of scenarios happening at the time.
Well, I'm trying to import a little potter.
Yeah, so the lift station was the biggest concern because it takes a lot just to maintain those every year. So we'll need to go back to the chapter and let them know. Everybody was banking on that water line coming in from Albuquerque to, to build on, so. The councilman told me that two lanes of that have already been secured in a way. There's the third lane that he's still working on. But that the well, that they're gonna get that well operational, there's a new well that they're gonna get operational before the end of the year to supply clean water to the community. So the, the new water line will just add more water coming in as well. The other option that Mr. Reed was recommending, he said a single dwelling was duplex. You can get rural houses in one area versus building out a whole lot. Or you can still get a smaller piece of property, have a duplex housing. But the biggest part is, that's a long run to travel back and forth from the chapter cross or else from, then the road back down. I mean, it's probably about six miles of dirt road you gotta travel. It's really washboard-y under. So that's the one thing too, we asked, is there, is there other areas up towards the chapter that they can build on? I'm not sure if they ever looked into that, that portion. But land status in that area is very... But land status in that area is very, very checkable. And that's the one thing that we've learned with the meeting over the last couple of days is that Naval Nation doesn't have the funds anymore to pay for a lot of fee land for development. Because this Gallup Water Project is impacting them big time. Because we built million-dollar facilities, which we didn't plan, or they didn't plan for, these reoccurring county taxes. So if we did all these treatment centers on McKinley County and they're $3 million, we have to pay the property tax on that $3 million. So the, the tribe is really now having to look at those areas. And that was the reason, if you guys don't build it, they told, they basically told Housing Authority, "If you don't build on fee land, just be prepared, you guys are going to be the one paying those property taxes now, or the clients. You're going to have to fashion that into your rent or something." This is, but that's, Naval Nation cannot fork those bills out anymore. And apparently, through an allotment, that's what Naval Nation is doing, when people can't pay for that. Now they go to Naval Nation and they offer to help pay their property tax. So I'm not sure the truth behind that, but that was a comment that they made. Sir?
Well, the Tehajjali folks and then the councilmen were very not under, they, as far as they're concerned, there wasn't good communication between NHA Central and them. They, they work with the HMO manager out there, and, and he's, he basically just tells them that, from their report, the citizens' report, that, that he's not getting information back to himself out there on the status of the units and things of that sort. You know, where, where the project stands and all that, so. And I, and the big, the other thing is, I really look at that because that, that community made, made headlines because of the water quality issue over there. And having to have water trucked in and all that. Question about whether there's lead, lead water lines over there that they're using. So, you know, it's.
So I mean, if it's a matter of buying the land to get the water line through it, is that what we're saying, or is it for these particular stations?
I think the councilman's on the track of getting that worked out soon here.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, the, the need to buy land, I don't think is there anymore because, because of what he's worked out. But he's worked, he's met with the governor, he's met, he's going to be meeting with county folks also to try to get that landowner to give access for the pipeline to go in so they can. And it's just a small length compared to the rest of it, that the two other property owners agreed to. So. Now, there's another issue too, but I'll bring that up at executive session.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Franklin? Seen, oh, you have one, okay.
On your annual inspection, is that all completed? On the annual?
Annual inspections, well, annual inspection starts at the first quarter.
Are you talking about the homeowner?
Well, it says here, public rental inspection.
Agent Dean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or Ernie. Yeah, Ernie. Ernie, Ernie. So we have.
Commissioner, there, there was issues with the homeowner annual inspections where some sites were not able to grant access by the home buyer, and they couldn't even get onto the property, the cage were locked. So that happens quite commonly throughout. There is here in Fort, due to misunderstandings between organization or within the organization of whether or not a paid-off but non-conveyed unit is supposed to undergo inspections. And since they were, we know they are, but at the time, they didn't know, and so they never performed them because they were paid off, just not conveyed. But this coming year, they will be doing all those that are unconveyed.
Okay. With, with that, did you list that in your concern? At least we, we documented that, we tried.
I can, for next one.
We, we did that, and it's noted here and reported.
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Any last questions for Mr. Franklin? How about?
Mr. Chair, just a comment regarding housing management. I know that we've been working real, real hard since December to standardize the applications. Hearing that, and I'm seeing and reading through Heather's report that we're still not standardized across the board. And so I, I believe it affects the amount of time and maybe even causes delays in getting folks into units.
It has, and that's, that's, that's where Heather and I are working. That's where we had that meeting. We wanted to have a separate meeting just with the, with, with the groups that are in, the three groups that I mentioned, the housing technicians, the housing specialists, and the fiscal checks. Those are the three main groups that are collective frontline people. We wanted to go over the SOPs, and that's where we're identifying the communication loopholes that we, that we, that we're going through. We're going through the whole process and saying, "Where is this? What, what happens when it goes from here? What happens after this? What happens after this?" So we're going through that, and we're, we're, we're building up those communication holes, especially with the, for, see, they, they interact with, their main interaction is with Treasury, with Maintenance Department or Maintenance Division, and also with legal. That's, those, those three connections are where we have to really make sure that those, those communication links are, are, are up and running and, and actually monitored. Because there's like, there's really no monitoring of when requests are made, and then, and then are they, or to respond back to. So that's, that's the question that I was asking when I was at those meetings. So what happens after you, how do you know that they're going to respond to you? What's, what's the follow-through? How are you following through to make sure that this, this, this issue has been carried about with this other external entity that's outside their organization? That's, that's the real key right there is, is to, and we need to monitor those, those, those processes. That's, that's the biggest thing that I see that we're going to be, we're going to be resolving, especially when it comes down to units that are becoming available for occupancy. Because there's still that, that intake process that has to happen, and that should be pre-planned before, and all that, all the orientations and everything should be completed right before, so that, right before they, when Maintenance turns over the keys, we, we push that, that we push that tenant into that. And we, we move in that tent and get, and, and get them, and start the rental process, or homeownership process. So that, that's what we're, that's what we're concentrating on. That's what I've been concentrating on for the last three weeks. And I was putting together flow charts, I've collected all their SOPs, I've collected their, their, their position descriptions and things like that. And we're looking at the whole entire organization as far as how that happened. Because I was telling Duane that we have, these are our frontline people. And if they're not performing the way they're supposed to be performing, then it has a, it has a, like a domino effect throughout the whole organization. So that, that's where we're at right now.
Yeah. So I know personally of a, of a situation of a young lady and her four-year-old son without a home, they're living in an RV camper. And they went to Tehaji to submit an application probably almost three weeks ago. It seems anywhere else, they'd be in a rental unit by now. And Tehaji has, I think, the highest PRV expenses as well.
Yeah.
So maybe you track this individual or track, you know, have case studies or something.
And that's exactly what I meant by that, that transfer, that, that tracking of the communication line. Because right now, when, when an application gets, gets submitted, there's no tracking mechanism in place to track how long that, you know, there's no follow-through. And that's why I'm saying you have to follow through with these, with these, with these applications that come across, that come in. They should be numbered, or there should be some sort of tracking mechanism in place to say, "Did you respond to this? If they're not, if they are not eligible, then you should respond within that period." And it says that right in your policy, it says you have five days to respond back, to respond back to that individual. And if they're missing information, then you have five days to let them know that that has been done. And then you need to track that and document that so that if there's, if this issue ever comes into question, then you have something to, to say that we, we follow our policy, and this, and this is the, is the outcome of our decision. So that, that's, that's what, that's the biggest thing that I see as far as, is the application process. There's no follow-through, and there's no confirmation of what needs to happen after, after a, an application comes into NHA.
So is there anything that's electronic? Are we working towards creating an electronic?
Well, that's what, that, so, so now I'm taking that, so that's what I'm seeing. If, if, if HDS Doorways has that capability of tracking that, that's, that's where, that's where we're, we're going back to the auto funding. Are these applications that were, that were put in place, does it meet N2A's, are NHAs standard operating procedures as far as, as far as the tracking mechanism, meeting NHAs needs? That's what we're going after right now. And I've been giving reports to Duane, and I've been telling him that this is what I see, and this is what's happening out there.
So maybe we just need to, I, I don't know what the answer is when we talk about this area.
Yeah.
Well, so what we're exploring is with this whole HDS system, is that component of the tracking. When we were looking, we've been in the last three weeks because of the SCPEG, looking at the whole system, what, what is being reported to us and what information is relevant for us to, to run our programs? And this is where we're finding out, the systems were not pumping out information according to our SOPs. So this is where we're looking at, are we, where do we do, where do we make these adjustments to have relevant information that you're asking for? And this new system that they had with doorways, with HDS, is looking at those recordings, I think, so the benchmark, how long has this building been there? Who's the responsible level individual that's going to, that's supposed to be undertaking? Because what we've been looking at is that we have this system. How, who is on monitoring these different levels of information going in, and where are they stalled at? It's just like Naval Nation, there was, everybody had their own little working paper. And those working papers were on here, but it wasn't in the system. So it's getting back to the system, the evaluation portion of it, to really see how much information. Like in maintenance, the maintenance have, are, never worked with this type of a system, so they're grasping it faster. Whereas our HMOs are having a little bit of struggle because it's a different change. So we're hopefully, not hopefully, but once we get through this, this review of processes that Ernest and Heather's doing, bringing that back in, look at, do a test run with doorways, we have to test the system. And it's true, there was a client last week calling, he said, "Mike, I've been waiting for a certain area," so we called back. Well, they were on the system, but has anybody called her back to give an update on the application? Because we do have an emergency process for burn events. Somebody that has areas, there is, there is a process there. But it was actually, we did, because of the magnitude maybe running around, that fell to the wayside. And so we ended up having to call them back. And it might be the client that you're just referring to. But those are some of the things that we're checking into. But we've got to have some type of recording of that in that system. So until we can get this thing reevaluated, and this is where the IT portion comes up, that we're looking at this whole workflow. Because it's frustrating for myself when somebody comes in that should have been okay, you can get in there and look at it. But until we get to there, I mean, hopefully by the end of, end of this one, we have some type of outline, what we're going to be doing testing doorways. Because HDS should be the tool that makes us more efficient than, versus making us inefficient. So that's going to be what we're looking at.
Well, it seems to me, Duane, that you, you, your fallback is always going to be your manual system. And that manual system has been around for quite some time. So if you streamline the application process, you just open someone's folder and see if everything's in there. I mean, why aren't people doing that on a daily basis? That's really, really frustrating, and this client is actually pregnant as well.
Well, like I says, we got, I just got to rely on Ernest and Heather to try and port the bugs out of my assistants on there. And unfortunately, I think this one of the things is, as we have a whole Naval Nation, it's just, it's trying to give, rely back to the filter, the file checks. But it's the processes part of it. So I can, I can't say more until I can really get a grip on who's at those different levels.
Can we make sure to get a report on that next month?
Update, yeah, we'll give it.
One last question before we break for lunch?
Um.
I got one more.
It's Jordan. Well, like, I think, I mean, we really need to get a handle of having it standardized. You know, everybody within the HMOs, they have the same process. They follow the same guidelines and procedures. I have one HMO, you cannot submit an application unless you're there in person. And that's like a, a turnaway, so I had this elderly in Wydrun's. Been giving her a ride, you know, to home and back because she's located in Wydrun's, and I, and her house is, you know, in really bad shape. So I went to the office, picked up an application, gave it to her. Her CHR filled it out, and she gave it back to me, and I turned it in. And I said, "Well, she has to be here." I was like, "Well, can you guys go out there and, you know, interview or whatever you need to do with her?" Because, you know, I'm just going to leave it like that. But just that process of where, you know, just to turn in an application, you have to be there in person. You know, does that state that in the policy? And is everybody required to do that within, you know, NHA? You know, and, and I think that those people that are in need of home, they assume, you know, NHA is just like this, like that. They're not, you know, willing to assist those people that are really in need. You know, so, you know, I, I can't wait for everybody to have, you know, that standardized process to where, you know, one tenant can automatically transfer to another office without, you know, restarting the whole application process, being on a waitlist and whatnot, that they're able to do that. You know, just being at better service and continue those good service, customer services for the families that, you know, do come by the office, that are interested, you know, in, in becoming, just to drop off an application to say, you know, "We're interested. How can you help me out? What can I do to get in a home?" And I know a couple of units in Simbo, Pre-Swet, you know, they've been waiting to be filled with the family, but hasn't been renovated for so long. So, you know, I, I just want to get those up and running to where we can, you know, provide homes for these families. So, but I'm glad that you guys are starting to review, you know, the process of those things because, you know, as we went out, you know, each HMO had their own process of doing things. And we, after we got back from that, we talked about standardizing, you know, those processes. But I guess it's still an issue, so if we can take a hand at that and see, you know, how we can better track that and have a flowing process to where, you know, we're, we're there for everyone. So that's all.
And a mechanism to follow up and make sure that we're continuing to follow the process and it doesn't just go by the wayside at some point, so.
I just want to say, I, I'm still hoping we can have that connectivity between finance, the HMOs, and, and construction. But, you know, since I came in, I couldn't understand coming in why there was three separate systems set up. And we still don't have that communication between them. I know Ernest is trying to find, trying to determine whether that can be done, but I'm, I believe, and I would even insist that we need to have one system functioning for every aspect of NHA. And that way, the reporting will be up to date among all, all sides. And they can't finger-point to each other saying, "Well, I'm waiting for them," or "I'm waiting for them." It's all right there. You just have to know how to operate the system. You know, and to me, that's part of shedding, shedding the old mindset. Somebody in the past put all those things in place for whatever reason. But looking at efficiency, looking at better service, think about that. Put that as the priority. And these old systems, these old requirements, if they stifle- Put that as the priority, and these old systems, these old requirements, if they stifle that, then recommend that you get rid of them. Let's move on to something that works better. We need to do a better job. And you're doing it, but we can do a lot better.
It's that same mindset, too, that we have to look at these projects like Whipper Will and those Tulani Lake type projects, where just because they spent a bunch of money on this, doesn't mean that we, that it's the right decision, rebuild and go forward. Maybe it makes better sense to move somewhere else that makes much more sense for the community and for, for the people that we're going to serve, so. You can't be married to these bad ideas or bad processes, so. With that, let's take a 20-minute, uh, 30-minute lunch break real quick, and then when we come back, we'll have the CAO's report.